This meeting will come to order because it will be presented this evening by the Brayden River High School ROTC escorted by Lieutenant Colonel James Brayden, Senior Army Instructor. Members Cadet Alyssa Penrod, Cadet Sheila Swanson, Cadet Shangian Shangian Wayne, and Cadet Alexis Demond Forward. Thank you.
Left arch. Colors, all left ace, recent arms.
Will you join Vice Chairman Gina Mensager in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very others. Right ace. On left arch.
Welcome to the December 12th, 2018 meeting. I don't have my mic on, I guess. Welcome to the December 12th, 2018 Manatee County School Board Meeting. We have some recognitions tonight, some great recognitions. I'm going to ask Mike Barber to introduce all of these. Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Board Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Saunders. It is great to have these board recognitions this evening, and we really have some really tremendous and exciting ones. You know, one of the great things about this school district is the generosity that's always displayed by our students, by our staff, by our employees, and our school communities. Whenever there's a crisis, not only in the state of Florida or in our country, but really across the world, people all across our district step up to do incredible things. And we want to give you a demonstration of that. In the aftermath of Hurricane Michael, many different segments of our school district reached out to help in those efforts. And there was one particular effort that really caught the attention and was really influential in the relief efforts and also inspirational. So we want to share that with you tonight, and we have a video that demonstrates this. So if we could.
We watched Hurricane Michael make landfall during during school. The group of the kids came and wanted to come up with a way to to help the people that were affected by it. So we started collecting donations, reached out to the community, a couple of different local businesses, schools helped, and we collected a little over 7,000 pounds of food, clothing, baby supplies, school supplies, water.
Come back, come back, Naja.
Back up.
Oh, wow, wow.
The reception we got, it was it was nothing I've ever I've ever seen or experienced before. It was amazing.
The most heartwarming part was meeting all the people that like got affected and how grateful they were for all the stuff they got.
We they told us we were family before we left after that afternoon. The kids that were there were crying, you know, just they they had made best friends with the students that I brought down, and it was it was really touching.
It was a great trip that I think everybody should have the opportunity to realize that we have a lot handed to us and we take grant, we take it for granted.
We are the School District of Manatee County.
Join us at wemanatee.net.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, that really is the spirit of the School District of Manatee County, and we have a special recognition. It's a gratitude award that Superintendent Saunders will present to Lee Middle Business Education Teacher, Richard Dano.
Absolutely, Richard, come on up, please, sir. I just want to recognize and thank you and the students, and of course, Mr. Cooper, for all the wonderful work that you've done, the giving, it's just one example of what our community does to give back, and you're just a fine example of the best and finest teachers we have. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then maybe of the whole class?
He's gonna say a few words and then they'll introduce themselves.
I really don't know what else to say other than what you guys saw in the video. I'm lucky enough to work with amazing kids like these. It was it was their hard work. They handled the logistics of it, the sorting, the collecting, all of the the manual labor, and then, of course, it was it was their idea to reach out and help those people. We are planning another trip back up on the 19th. We're going to go back to the same neighborhood we were at, and then we've teamed up with Ms. Deborah Gambino and taking school supplies from Manatee County with us, along with the stuff that we're collecting over at Lee Middle. So I'm excited to be able to to go back and take another group of kids with and and kind of, you know, keep paying it forward and share the experience with as many as I can.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Minor. At this point, a privilege.
Okay, Board Member Hope says a few words to share.
I just wanted to thank you and and all of your students. Panama City, Florida is my hometown in Florida where where I graduated from high school, and so many of those families are families that I grew up with, and I want to thank each of you for the work that you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Are we gonna do?
If you could step to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Jacob Blankenhorn, eighth grade.
I am Jeffrey Van Berkel. I go to Leonel School, and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Gianna Greco. I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Leonel School.
My name is Peyton Marquette, and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Neil Taylor, and I'm in sixth grade.
We have one more, we have one more big kid.
Yeah, I'm told that all the time, and I'm Scott Cooper, I'm the proud principal of Lee Middle School.
Okay, great.
Can you guys move? By the way, we do have some proud parents here, so y'all can stand up. You guys can go ahead and leave. Unless y'all want to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Board Members. As you know, tonight, we have a really big turnout for tonight's meeting, and so it's going to take us a little time just to get back and forth outside of the meeting as we do these recognitions. But Speak Up Manatee is a parent organization that works in conjunction with the district's ESC department to advocate and educate parents and staff of students with disabilities. They have a special presentation that they want to make tonight. To tell us more about that is we have Joe Roberts of our ESC Student Services here. So Joe?
Okay, I want to thank the board very much, our superintendent, and everybody that's with us in the audience tonight. I want you to just take a second and think about our parents when they they just find their children just become eligible for ESC services. And they walk into a room, sometimes alone, they'll walk into the room and they'll open that door, administrators, school psychologists, social workers, teachers, all types of people that are in there. The anxiety that that can create amongst our parents is is extremely high, and a lot of times when they get to middle and high school, they'll quit coming to IEP meetings altogether. So I'm not sure I'm going to let, I'm going to let, I'm going to introduce two ladies that were the founding members of our group and let them kind of tell, because I was going back in my head, it's like, how did we start this group? And I think we we met, had a couple of meetings, and these topics came up, and we said, how can we help our parents? How can we lessen the anxiety when they walk into these IEP meetings? And we all kind of formed an idea, and we said, hey, we're going to get a group, we're going to start this group, and we're going to start giving information to our parents that want to come and participate in these group meetings. And the two parents that stood up, and I would be remiss if I did not mention Ms. Nicole Cox, our new director, she has been an integral part of this committee, but I now want to introduce Mary Ann Schahall and Trish Middleton. They are the founding members of this group, and they are just, they're fabulous people, and they support the school system 100%. Thank you.
Hello, so we are Speak Up Manatee. My name is Tricia Middleton, and this is my youngest daughter, Becca. I'll just read our vision. So we are families and district administration coming together to promote positive educational outcomes for students with disabilities in Manatee County public schools. So our group is made up of ESC families and ESC staff, and we're coming together to benefit the ESC students, right? So we currently have two facets of our group. We hope to expand, but right now we have our IEP Roundtable Nights, and then we have our Above and Beyond Recognition, which we're here for tonight. So our IEP Roundtable, we do once a month and at varying times, hopefully, so that everyone can find an opportunity to come and join us. The first portion of that is an educational aspect, and then the second portion, we break into small groups. We have staff, experts, and by experts, I mean, parents that have been through the IEP process for quite some time, and advocates, and our goal is to work together to come up with a positive path for the IEP challenges. So we all agree that there is room for improvement, and we believe that the way to achieve that is through communication, transparency, and a willingness to work together. So one of our biggest goals is to overcome the us versus them mentality that is pretty prevalent out there, and really come together to to benefit our kids. And as much as we want to affect positive change, we also want to acknowledge that we already have some amazing people on our team, and and so hence, we have the Above and Beyond Recognition reward, award, and it is our way of recognizing what is right in the ESC world. And so to that, I would like to introduce Chelsea LaRaca. She's gonna take over.
Thank you. Public speaking, not my thing.
Everybody come? No. Don't make me cry. I'm gonna cry. Our kids have made gifts for each of you, something they've been working on. Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight with my son and other current and past students and parents of Manatee High, and I would just like to say a few words about an incredible teacher that all of us have had the fortune of getting to know, and that teacher is Tracy Swart. Many people. Many people say that it takes a village, but many of us here believe it takes a Miss Tracy. Miss Swart understands that teaching our special children is not only teaching academics, but it's also so much more. It's about helping them to see their value, letting them know that they are loved and accepted for exactly who they are, teaching them that they have an important place in our community, and helping to provide them with life experiences that typical families sometimes take for granted. Every Friday night during football season, Tracy can be found in the reserved section on the 50-yard line, supporting her school, surrounded by her students, their parents, classroom aides, and other students from the school, friends, and colleagues. She encourages her students and parents to come to the games, and so last year, I took Devin to his very first one. I can't tell you how many football players and cheerleaders and other typical students came up to talk to or hang out with or give high fives to Miss Tracy's students as they walked by. Everyone seems to know Miss Tracy, and everyone seems to know Miss Tracy's students, and it really touched me. And I asked her how so many of the kids know her students since they're taught in their own classrooms, and I'll never forget what she told me. She'd said that when she decided to take that job and decided to teach these kids, that these kids were going to be a part of this school, and that's exactly what she's done. That's the community that she has helped create there, and our kids are a part of Manatee High as much as any other student there. Going above and beyond for her students and all students and providing opportunities for them to grow is a way of life for her. She has a history of tutoring members of the football team. She gives her students jobs delivering coffee and soda throughout school. She invites her students to help work the concession stand at JV games. She helps them create routines so that they can participate in the school talent shows. She chaperones her students to dinners and then to homecoming and prom so that they can have that experience, just like every other teenager. Tracy creates an environment of inclusion and acceptance for all students, not just her own. She's involved in a social group for teens and adults with disabilities, and she invites her students to attend. She helps with Special Olympics when needed and is always there to root on the kids. And she is the roommate of two truly remarkable young men who have Down Syndrome. Her devotion to her students and the special needs community is at the forefront of everything that she does. My son is a student at Manatee High and has been in Tracy Swart's class for a year and a half. Because of Tracy, my son has friends for the very first time, or as he likes to call it, a school family. Because of Tracy, he has a social life like every teen should. Because of her, he loves going to school again and is back on track progressing academically. But maybe most importantly, because of her, his future is looking brighter than ever before. Tracy is an incredible teacher and probably the most selfless person I've ever known. She truly lives the life that she advocates for, and she's an invaluable gift, not only to our children, but to Manatee High and the Manatee County School District. And I think I can speak for all of us here when I say thank you so much for not only teaching our children, but for loving them and changing their lives in some of the best possible ways, and we are forever grateful.
She has foregone the opportunity to say a few words, but we do have an award to present to her.
Thank Tracy, thank you so much for everything that you have done and everything you continue to do.
Thank you.
Now, if we could.
Thank you, too.
If the whole group could come over here and line up in front of the dance stage this quick, and we'll get a picture.
One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Y'all follow, y'all follow Mr. Robbins, okay? Yeah. Thank you. Y'all follow Mr. Robbins.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, great. I'll put these over here. Anybody? Not?
Okay, Board Members, so we saw generosity, we saw really in that celebration of love and devotion, and this next recognition is really all about excellence. This group is really a gold standard of excellence in in what they do. So to tell us more about that, I'd like to introduce our Curriculum Specialist for the Visual and Performing Arts, Julie A. Bear.
Good evening, Chairman Minor, nice to say that for the first time, Superintendent Saunders, and members of the board. It's my absolute pleasure to introduce you to the directors of the current back-to-back Class 3A Marching Band State Champions. Jeremiah Bowman is in his third year as Head Director of Bands at Brayden River High School, and Mr. Bowman is originally from Indiana, where he graduated from Ball State University and taught four years before moving to Florida in 2016. Prior to arriving in Manatee County, he was Director of a State Champion Marching Band in Indiana. In his three years at Brayden River, the Marching Band of Pirates have been state champs for his second and third years. This year, the band was joined by Assistant Director Cliff Dawson. Mr. Dawson is a ninth-year teacher. He arrived at Brayden River this year after teaching eight years in neighboring Pinellas County. In addition to loving being a member of the Pirate Family, Mr. Dawson says his favorite thing has been to see the students' growth from the first practice held in August to finishing in fourth place during semifinals and then jumping up three spots to finish in first place at finals. Talk about perseverance. Here to tell you a little more about the Marching Band of Pirates is their Head Band Director, Jeremiah Bowman.
Thank you, Mrs. A. Bear, for the introduction. Thank you, Chairman Minor, Superintendent Saunders, and members of the board for the invitation to tonight's meeting to be recognized. Today, we have three students representing the Brayden River Band Program, Senior Drum Major Marshall Knapp. We have Senior Drum Major Joshua Helberg. And Junior Drum Major Penelope Sugg. All three are excellent examples of students who are leaders, hardworking, and dedicated student musicians in Manatee County. And the entire band as a whole, I just, I'm so proud of their accomplishments, how hard they work, literally hundreds of hours, starting in July, all the way until November 17th at championships. Mr. Dawson and I are very thankful for our strong administrative support at Brayden River, led by Mrs. Sharon Scarborough and our district's Visual and Performing Arts Curriculum Specialist, Ms. Julie A. Bear. I want to thank Chairman Minor for attending a few of our football games, home show, and community showcase, Mr. Kennedy for coming to help serve the students breakfast before their state championships weekend, and Mrs. Saunders for her words of encouragement to the band at the football game the night before championships. Her words were encouraging, uplifting, and let us know the entire district was pulling for us to bring home another championship. Thank you again for the invitation to be recognized, and we will keep working hard to showcase the arts in the School District of Manatee County. Next, I would like to introduce Drum Major Marshall Knapp to say a few words. Marshall is a senior at Brayden River, second-year drum major, plays the alto saxophone, and plans to major in music education. Marshall Knapp.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, for the introduction. Thank you, Chairman Minor, Superintendent Saunders, and members of the board for the invitation to tonight's meeting to be recognized. My past four years in the Marching Band of Pirates, and preeminently, the two years as drum major, has been the most memorable and rewarding experience. This band program has helped my peers and I succeed in other areas of our lives, and that is because of the impact of music. I am so grateful for the opportunities I've had in this program, and I know that many will have that same opportunity in the future. Thank you again for your support in inviting us to be recognized.
So to close, I want to congratulate once again Mr. Bowman, Mr. Dawson, and the Marching Band of Pirates. Not only are the students learning how to play music in the school music programs, but under the guidance of their outstanding teachers, the band program is developing smart and thoughtful young people through their learning and activities. Just a few weeks ago, Marshall Knapp scheduled time to come and interview me about the field of music education. He has plans to study music in college next year and wanted to speak to someone about the field, someone in the field, about their experiences, and his questions challenged me to think deeply about our profession and my philosophies of music and arts education. More than once, I had to pause and really consider my answers. I believe that Marshall's experiences at Brayden River are preparing him and the other students for bright futures, no matter their chosen career paths, and their futures are sure to be filled with success, happiness, and of course, as the 2018 theme of their show, lots of humor. Thank you.
Superintendent Saunders is now going to present a coin of excellence to each member, and if you could, once you get that, if you could line up in front of the podium.
Thank you so much. We gave you a call, a state championship medal for your own. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. If we could get the band members in the center and then.
Where's Stella?
One, two, three. One, two, three.
One more, Mr. Chair.
Just a comment for me, the band is truly amazing. I've never seen a better halftime show on TV or anyplace else and it's an army of workers and you know, right down to the raising money for the band support with headed by Thelma.
Right. And they've proven that...
Thelma Fields.
They've proven that by winning four state championships since 2012, so, okay. This last recognition is extremely special. It was just announced last week that the College Board made the announcement that the school district of Manatee County is one of just two school districts in the state of Florida and one of just 373 school districts in the United States and Canada be named to the Ninth Annual AP District Honor Roll. To be included, a school district has to achieve two things since 2016. To increase the number of students participating in advanced placement courses and to increase the percentage of students earning AP exam scores of three or higher. And our school district accomplished that. And the people that you're looking at right here are the reason why. And so, we just wanted to take this opportunity to invite them down here and I'm going to let them introduce themselves, tell you where they work, what their position is. And again, these are the people responsible for our school district making the Ninth Annual AP District Honor Roll. So if we could start with Shirley.
Hi, I'm Shirley Hurley, I'm the district advanced studies coordinator.
Hi, I'm Ben Hall, I teach at Lakewood Ranch High School and I teach AP US History, AP European History and AP Macroeconomics and I am the AP team leader.
My name is Sammy Stoltz, I teach at Lakewood Ranch High School, I teach AP Human Geography and World and Cultural Geography.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Galindo, I'm assistant principal at Lakewood Ranch High School and I'm the AP coordinator.
Good evening, I'm Linda Francis, assistant principal at Manatee High School and I'm the AP coordinator.
Hi, I'm Polly Barnes, I teach at Manatee High School and I teach AP English Language and Composition.
Hi, I'm Eric Nelson and I teach AP Human Geography and AP World History at Braden River High School.
Hello, I'm Brian Kirchberg, I am at Braden River High School and I teach AP US Government and Politics.
Good evening, I'm Janera Finkley from Bay Shore High School, I teach AP Language and
Hi there, I'm Travis Cochran, I'm assistant principal at Braden River High School and advanced placement coordinator.
Good evening, I'm Lyndi Carlson, I'm at Bay Shore High School and I'm the AP coordinator.
Hello, I'm Vicki DeVitro, I teach AP Computer Science Principles at Bay Shore High School.
Good evening, Daniel Cordero, assistant principal of Southeast High School and I'm the AP coordinator as well, thank you.
I'm Sheree Greenhall, I'm the AP Spanish teacher at Southeast High School.
Hi, I'm Monica DeLesline, I'm the assistant principal at Palmetto High School over the advanced studies.
Carrie McMillan, Palmetto High School, I teach AP Calculus AB and AP Calculus BC.
Hi, I'm Ashley Flint, I teach AP Human Geography at Palmetto High School.
I'm Carl Lockman, I'm the principal of Palmetto High School and I'm very proud of the folks that I brought this evening and I'm proud of all of these great educators that we have here.
This is our last school board meeting before the holidays and Superintendent or Santa Saunders is in a very giving mood, so she has coins of excellence to hand out to each Again, if y'all could just scrunch in a little bit, call people, call us people in the back and we're going to get a photo.
Mr. Minor, can you step to your right, there you go. One, two, three. Oh, wait. Did they turn? Okay, one more.
Mr. Chair, while they're going out, I'd like to ask the superintendent a question, How many of our children are involved in advanced placement classes?
Shirley, sorry to put you on the spot, but what was that question again?
The exact number, do you know this year, I'm not sure, came off the top of your head. How many students? Oh my goodness, I have no idea off the top of my head.
I can tell you this, that since 2016, the number of students taking AP courses increased by approximately 300 students. And the percentage of students earning a three or better increased by 5%. And again, one of only two school districts in the state of Florida to accomplish that.
That is great.
It increased tremendously, but that's a very good question, so Shirley, if we can get that information, we'll email.
How many overall?
Sure, absolutely.
It just seems so easy to say, but when you think about how hard that is to do...
Absolutely.
Then it is put in perspective.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and it's increasing opportunity for students from all walks of life.
Okay, doesn't that bring tears to you? I'm just so proud of what we're doing. At this time, the chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the December 11, 2018 Agenda updated to December 11, 2018 posted in the district website, along with the addition of an item number eight under New Business which would read "Approval to Consider Written Commentary from the Public" about the superintendent contract submitted to the board prior to February 26, 2019 school board meeting. That will be item number eight under New Business of our agenda. Next on our agenda is, do I hear a motion to approve the orders of the day in the agenda? Moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by...
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Hope. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Next, our reports and presentations. The first is the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition and Mr. Minor has to come forward and here I am. There was a meeting held up in Tampa of all the 14 school districts that compose the Central Florida School Board Coalition, representing over a million families in central Florida. At this meeting, we elected a new vice chair, Carl Persis, from Volusia County. That's kind of an example of, it's the counties from the Gulf, you know, to the Atlantic. And Carl is a leader in that district, he was a leader in the Volo program that they're implementing and I talked about a couple meetings ago about security for our students. As far as other, the other business, that was about it. It's kind of a fun breakfast to share thoughts and what we're doing and what others are doing and I'm proud to be the representative there. The next matter under reports and presentations, the status of the Enterprise Resource Planning, ERP implementation and next steps, I'm going to ask Mr. Cosmac to come forward and share his report with our community. Thank you, George, come on down.
for the school district. And about a month ago, at the November board meeting, I presented initially the status of the implementation and the board asked that I come back in about a month and update you on our progress and that's what I'd like to do tonight. What I have done is taken that presentation that I used on November 13th and I've simply used it and made some updates and I've denoted those updates in red. So what I'd like to do is give you an overall update of again what I've said back in November and then explain a little bit more those updates that we've been able to make accomplishments in the interim period of time. This is the agenda for this evening, the overall project status, I'll give you a summary where we stand, the individual software modules, where we stand there. Talk about the Florida DOE State Staff Reporting which is coming from both SDMC as well as MTC. The current work items and I'll give you an update on what we've been able to accomplish again in the past month. Improvements and enhancements that I believe we need to make in the near future. The project costs, I've been able to expand upon those to give you some more detail, some more accurate costs. You've asked that I include some project savings, so I've included a number of savings which I think we either have realized or we're about to realize and then talk about our next steps. The overall project status, I think we made some great improvements over the past month. We have reduced the number of payroll calls or calls into the payroll department. As I mentioned back last month, we were looking at about 1,500 emails or calls per week for payroll. That's down significantly to well under 200 at this point in time. We do have, we've had some payroll errors and we continue to have those. Most of those are not system-related but sometimes data entry-related. Those are being fixed. We've accomplished a pretty significant one just last week that I'll talk a little bit about later. It's regarding year-to-date payroll, pay stub balances on employee checks. But the bottom line is we're making some significant progress in payroll. One of the things that I also mentioned, we started back in August, every payroll we had five off-cycles, which mean we had five correction payrolls after the regular payroll. So we were basically having one per day. We're now down to one per week, so we've made some great progress there. Purchasing also is improving quite a bit. We are processing about 3,000 requisitions for a full month. 2,000 of those are P-card transactions, the rest are regular POs. The approval time for those transactions have gone from six days down to less than one day. So making significant progress on purchasing. We also are paying our vendors in a timely fashion. We have implemented this year 28 software modules. Actually, we purchased 28, we implemented 26. You might recall, I gave you a frame of reference that USF has implemented PeopleSoft, they implemented a total of 16 modules. Seminole County Public Schools, when they went live, they implemented nine, they're up to 11 now. So it gives you an idea of the size and the complexity of the implementation that was done here at Manatee Schools. It has resulted in a very complex environment and I think there are still issues out there, particularly in the training and the business process environment that need to be addressed because of this complexity. We did have significant data conversion problems and I would say that this is probably the biggest issue we've had with this implementation, is data conversion. And I mean from our JDE legacy system. So that has been an emphasis that we've been living with and I think we're pretty well over the hump at this point in time. We do have one area that needs to be converted yet and that's our general ledger balances. We did convert one year, which is 1718, but the contract we have with Cyber called for two prior years and we have reaffirmed with Cyber last week that we will be requiring them to do that. So that process is underway at this point in time. Also, overall, the significant accomplishment was making sure that we did report to the DOE, our state staff data. And that was successfully done for both, well, for SDMC, we were able to submit and there was no FTE impact on that. We still have some issues on the MTC, state staff reporting, but those are being addressed. This is the individual module status and essentially what I have here are the modules, spread over three slides, then identified the ones that are essentially working versus the ones that I view as impaired. That is either they're working or not work, they're working partially basically or not working at all. And I won't go into detail, again, the ones that I've changed are denoted in red. Benefit Administration is the one that I've moved from impaired to working. We were successfully able to implement open enrollment, which all of our employees were able to enroll in our insurance coverage for next year. We also were successful in getting the file containing that data over to our medical carrier, Florida Blue. So that one, we've moved from impaired to working. The others that are in the impaired category, we are still looking at. The one thing that I'm going to suggest as an improvement, just as a heads-up, is that given the number of modules and the complexity that I mentioned, I think it's something that we need to consider maybe decommissioning some modules and replacing that functionality with functionality that is what we call bolt-ons, which is reduced functionality which is not part of the module, which is built for us, not a customization, but something that actually performs the functionality that we need, but not through a PeopleSoft module. Again, the goal there is to simplify our system and also to reduce our costs. But these are the modules, again, these three that I view as somewhat impaired. We have two more that continue to be impaired. I did move the general ledger module from impaired to working. As you may know, we did close the financial books for July, August and we also successfully did the same for September. did the same for September and October. So given that, the general ledgers are populated. We are in the process of doing the close for November as we speak. So we expect to have that done this month. This is the third slide. This contains the PeopleSoft modules that are implemented at MTC. We view those as working at this point in time. State staff reporting, again, there were no significant errors for SDMC. We do have cleanup that we're doing on non, non-critical data items. We do have a couple more days to finish those. Most of the outstanding data areas, which, again, were not FTE-related, were at the charter schools. We've had the charters in a couple days with their staff in order to correct their data. So that's looking pretty good at this point in time. Manatee Technical College, we did, unfortunately, weren't able to do the correction. They did accept our file. Unfortunately, it had significant errors in it. The time to correct those is in the next survey, which is in January. We have from January 7th to, I believe, February 7th. So we did have a discussion about that issue this morning. Unfortunately, that system is not working well at this point in time. So this is the number-one priority for MTC to get the state staff reporting for MTC, known as Survey W in working condition. The current work items noted here, these are the same items we had at the last slide, and I've noted which ones are completed. We were able to pull the quarterly federal tax return, and it's the 941, successfully from the system, as opposed to doing it all manually. So that's looking much better. The state unemployment insurance, we just completed that, or the Cyber just completed that. Unfortunately, we're two months late in this filing, but the, the penalty is minimal, but we expect the, the next one to come out successfully as we've, as Cyber has tested that. The Florida retirement system, we might also recall, recall that we've had some very big difficulties with getting successful data to the Department of Management Service for FRS. We just completed the one, or got results for the last month. We did have four employee errors, which is a tremendous reduction in what we were looking at before. Those will be done manually, and we should be back into a normal, non-error-type mode. We understand what those four errors were, so the next one we do, we expect to be 100% successful. As I mentioned, the general ledger monthly end close was completed for September and October. We're working on November at this point in time. And the general ledger prior to balances, we did have a discussion with Cyber Management last Thursday. They have committed to actually move those two, other two, those other two years, '16, '17, and, and the prior year, into the PeopleSoft system. So we're going to be working with them over the next week or two. The last item here are reports. That's an outstanding issue that we've had. We've been provided with an inventory of reports at this point in time. There are a fair number. What we're doing is testing them to see which ones working, which ones aren't. I expect to prepare a final inventory and provide that to Cyber by the end of this Necessary improvements. We do see, again, a lot of room for improvement. The system by no means is in, in fighting shape. Employee recruiting, we'd like to replace the front end of that, which is an Oracle product, but not a PeopleSoft product. We'd like to replace that with the software that is delivered with PeopleSoft, the software that we purchased back in 2016. It's a much more seamless interface than what we're seeing now with Taleo. That will save us, I'll talk a little bit about later, I guess, but that will save us a substantial amount of money. The DOE State Staff Surveys, although we finished two for SDMC and also for MTC, we still have some more to look forward to. Number three, which is, again, a big funding, general fund survey for the district, hits in February. So we're going to need to make sure that that thing is working properly. And then we have Survey Five, which is June, which is another important one for the district. W, as I mentioned, is the MTC survey. That's due, it opens in January, on January 7th, and closes on February 7th. So that's, again, our big priority since we've discovered recently it's not working. We also need to improve user training. The complexity is, is high on the system, and it takes a lot of repetition for people to understand how to use the system. We've had some slip-ups, and that's the way we, that's what we address them, through training. In addition, we need to make sure that we have all the training materials done for new people who are into the district. So we're not facing a situation where people just don't understand how to use the system. Tied into that are the business processes. Given all of the modules we have, we need to make sure that all of those modules, people understand what, how the transactions flow within our system. And that is not really well done. We do have business processes, but a lot of them need to be expanded upon and corrected because some of them are wrong. The big, the big job for January is W-2s and 1099s. We were able to, last week, address a lot of the balance information, the year-to-date employee pay stub balances. We did the check year-to-date balances, the tax year-to-date balances, earnings year-to-date balances, and deduction year-to-date balances, and as well as balances for medical, dental, and vision. So we did implement those. Yesterday is when the employees got the checks. I was prepared for the worst when I walked in to hear that payroll was getting a lot of calls. They did, but most of them, people just didn't quite understand their pay stub. I think we were down to about five or six people who really had questionable balances converted. And when I say converted, this is, these are the balances that were coming from our legacy JDE system over into PeopleSoft. The new thing that I included on our list here is incorporate workflow functionality into processes. What we found is the individual modules seem to work okay in a lot of cases, but the transactions, when they flow from one module to another, do not, or they're not flowing to the right organization. So they might be entered by a bookkeeper instead of flowing to the appropriate financial organization, they're flowing to the wrong one, or they're not flowing at all. So that's something that we really need to put a lot of attention to, again, to make this system work and make it easier for people to use. And then finally, system simplification and module decommissioning. We need to take a serious look at that. We can save some money by doing that, too, because these modules, even though we bought them, say, in like 2016, we pay annual maintenance on them. And I think we need to, you know, given all of the costs that we're looking at next year with the, the three new schools, I think we really need to see what, what money we can squeeze out of this system to help pay for those other items. This is the project cost that I was able to expand upon. That first column there in black is the numbers as I had last month. The first line there, the 1.6 million, I have changed that to the two lines in red adjacent to it, the 1.1 and the 1.2. So basically, what happened is throughout our purchase, throughout our project, our purchases for software were about $1.1 million. The maintenance of that software, the support costs that we pay annually is 1 point, almost 1.3 million. What we've been able to do is decommission a couple of modules. We got it down that our annual maintenance per year, this is over several years, our annual maintenance per year is just under $400,000. It's about $399,000. So that's one that we really need to keep an eye, an eye on because that is something that recurs every, every year. The cyber implementation, that is the cost for the labor services provided by Cyber over the past two years. We're up to almost $19 million on that. That is the money that has been validated. There is still, money's out there, about 1.5 million that has not been validated. We are working with Cyber at this point in time to understand, understand their invoicing a bit better. So they are providing, actually, they just provided additional information today. The next one is the cost. It didn't change the cost over the past several years for system administration from our Agittec vendor. The next item is the cost for the servers, the computers, basically, that add, that PeopleSoft runs on. The next item I changed to zero because we actually haven't spent this money. This is board-approved, but we are waiting to see completion of those items before we say that we've spent them. The first one is cyber stabilization. This is the cleanup work for all of the defects that we saw when we first cut over. That's a fixed-price contract, so that will not change. The next two are the support costs, the annual support costs for maintenance as well as development. Again, we have not spent any of that money, so that's at zero at this point in time. We did purchase the cyber, the state's reporting software from Cyber. That was approved at last month's meeting for $163,000. And what we included here is a, is a more detailed look at the SDMC project personnel, the people who were brought together in order to help implement the system. And then finally, I also put the cost of our auditing firm. This is the portion that's explicitly for ERP review by the auditors. So that totals 24 million. As I mentioned, we have about a million and a half of invoices from Cyber that have not yet been validated. So that's going to put up, put us, you know, over 25 and a half million if we were to pay all that, but that's still out as to whether we will. Annual cost savings, a few that we put together. We've canceled user productivity software, no longer needed for $44,000 annually. Hyperion Cloud Service, it's gone up to $92,000. We are not using that. We found a better alternative. We don't believe we should be paying the software support fees for our legacy environment of $256,000, since while it's operating, we're not going to be needing support or adding updates, which that fee would provide. If we do go ahead and implement the new recruiting software from PeopleSoft, we'll replace the Taleo software. That is an actual subscription fee. We pay month, we pay annually to the tune of $170,000. And the other PeopleSoft modules that we make decommission, if we can work our way through that, we don't know how much that's going to be, but that certainly could add up to a significant number. But excluding that, we're, we're looking at $563,000. So hopefully funds that can be used better elsewhere. And next steps, open enrollment, that one, obviously, we have completed. We'll be shipping our final file this week. Staff training, we do need to expand our abilities for the staff to query the data that's in the system. We have it scheduled for the week of January 14th for about 20 individuals in our staff. And as I mentioned earlier, W-2s and 1099s are on our radar for January. So I believe that wraps up my presentation. I'll take any questions.
Okay, fellow board members, vice chair Gina Messenger.
I just really had only one question. You talked about the W-2s, and you, I think, said that, that everyone's been looking into making sure that all the different information is transferred over and correct, and I guess what I'm asking is, how are we ensuring that all the W-2s are correct? That's, I mean, I know that we're, you said we're looking into all those things, but I want to make sure, how are we ensuring that that, when we send them out, they are correct for each employee?
Well, what we have, the, the, the real problem was the lack of data, good data conversion from JDE into PeopleSoft. So we didn't have good year-to-date balances up through the middle of July, which was our last JDE payroll run. So what we've done is we've taken a look at those JDE balances. We've loaded them into PeopleSoft, and we validated that all of that data came over correctly. And so we'll have a good year-to-date balance for all those areas, for taxes, for deductions, for earnings, for medical, dental, vision. All of those have been validated as been accurate coming out of JDE. And then what we will do in January is we'll start preparing those W-2s and ensuring that all of the year-to-date data that's on even actually the last paycheck of this month are actually reported correctly on the W-2s. So we'll be going over payroll data, making sure that the payrolls that have been generated since July are accurately summing to the end-of-year payroll numbers for the, for the employees.
So that will be each employee, you will be going through each one. And who is the "we"? Is payroll department, or the ERP team, or who, who will be doing that?
The payroll department is ultimately responsible for that, yes.
And they will be going through each one, or can you speak to that?
Well, I would say we won't go through all 7,000 of them.
I mean, how are we ensuring the accuracy? You know what I mean?
Well, like I said, we're going to go back and, and the, the thing that we were doing when we converted the balances is looking forward to the W-2s. I mean, that, that is the critical part because we've known our balances were wrong. So now we're confident that we have picked up all of the data from JDE. We know that we're picking up the data from each payroll run for each employee. So making sure that they all sum at the end of the year to what's on the W-2, when we generate the W-2s, is how we're going to validate that.
Okay. Thank you. That was my one concern.
Okay. Board member Golden, you had a question or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sir, in your report for Department of Education state reporting, I believe you said that the school district of Manatee County, K-12, that report was submitted, and there were no significant errors.
Correct.
But you did make a comment that except for some of the charter school information...
That's correct.
All right. Would you share with me what information and which charter schools were in error?
There was a variety. There were small numbers from, I believe, most all of the charter schools, but actually there were corrections for the traditional schools as well. I believe it focused on a couple of the charter schools with, which I don't know their names offhand. But again, mostly it was address information. It was race information. It was, I believe, ethnicity, ethnicity information. So those were the type of fields that were found to be missing for the most part. They did not affect our FTE, our funding, but it was something that we like to make sure our data is as clean as possible. So that's the reason we did have a couple of sessions, open labs, where we invited all the schools to come in. We had a representative from our staff, from one of the business analysts, go through all the data with the error reports, basically, take school by school, and make sure that they corrected them. So we did receive another report, I believe, this morning. I haven't seen what our final numbers are, but we have until, I believe, the end of this week in order to make some final corrections.
Then let me ask you, with respect to the necessary improvements and enhancements, when you say subsequent DOE staff surveys, number three, I think, was one set, and number five was another, and then W was another. Does that include any corrections that might have been made as a consequence of improper data entered for the charter schools?
Yeah, well, all schools, all schools will be re-entered for those. Those surveys are brand-new surveys. So we basically start over again. As we have new state, students, we have new staff, so those will be new extracts from the PeopleSoft system. Survey Three is, again, a big funding survey for the district. And Five is not so much a funding district, a funding, but more of a demographic-type, type survey. But all the schools, charters included, will be required, much like they did for Survey Two, to enter correct data.
Let me just express to you what my concern is, because I have received reports that at least one of the charter schools has information that was incorrectly entered and presented to the state. And what I'm really concerned about is if there is a capacity or capability for those errors, be they, well, you didn't say unimportant, you just said, what did you, not significant.
Correct.
They might be significant to that school, because if it's a Title I school, and there's a certain percentage of population that they need, and the population numbers are wrong, then they lose that capacity to, to get Title I funding. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
So I guess what I'm asking is, you're saying we have a few more days to make sure that no errors like that... that no errors like that have occurred?
That's correct. Yeah, we, I believe we received some error reports this morning. Didn't have an opportunity to take a look at them. I know one of our staff, several members of our staff are taking a look at that. And their process is to go back to the schools that might have errors in them and get them in, get those errors changed. And then not only the charter schools, it would possibly be the SDMC as well. So we try and make this as clean a survey as we possibly can. We'll do the same for three, five, and of course, W.
Madam Superintendent, do you have some comments regarding this?
Yes, sir. Reverend Golden, I believe the one in question regarding Title I, all that was already corrected and verified yesterday, so that matter has been taken care of. So the rest of the errors that could be out there are just personnel which have no cost impact. The only one right now that we have outstanding that have cost impact is that MTC. But that one charter school has already been addressed and handled yesterday.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Board Member Kennedy.
Mr. Cosmack, first, I know next time this board meets, you will finish your service to the district and we'll be off in the Mediterranean or something somewhere. So I want to thank you for getting us through this, helping us through this and kind of leading our team. And team, wherever you are out there, thank you to you guys, too. I just have a few questions, Mr. Chair, for the future. And I just have kind of some questions about projected completion dates. First would be the commitment we have or we had from Cyber to do two prior years of the general ledger balances. Do you have a general timeframe when we can expect that to be done?
Well, we are pulling those data out of JDE this week. And then we will be providing that to Cyber. They need to map that data from those data elements into the appropriate databases in the PeopleSoft system. I would think we're probably talking two weeks to get that done.
Okay. So before we leave for the holidays?
I would, I would hope by the end. My goal is to get that done before I depart. So that would be the, well, the break, twenty-first. So that's my target right now to get them, get those finished.
Okay, great. Thank you. The decommissioning, and maybe you said this in the presentation, I apologize, but the modules that you have listed as impaired, the plan you're putting forward, is it to decommission all of the ones that are still impaired on your list?
No, not necessarily. You know, the ones that are impaired, I think for the most part, we don't really use a great... We can find alternatives for those modules, in my opinion. E supplier, for example, it's a module that we purchased to contain all of our vendor information. So when we go out to bid, we can get to those vendors. However, it requires us, requires the vendors to log into our system and put that data in on how to reach them. Well, there is a statewide system that already has that information that we've been using and most districts in the state use. It's questionable why we would want to keep a module like that when it's being performed by another system that's probably more robust, has all the vendors in it, why we would want to ask vendors to come and populate our system. So that would be, to me, one that we should consider decommissioning. The others, grants, there's a grant module, and that assists us in our grant tracking. We're one of the few districts in the United States that have that module implemented on a K-12 basis. It's targeted at higher education. We should be able to do that less expensively and more efficiently without that module. So that's another example. Absence management contains all the rules for absence. That one is a little tougher. It doesn't talk well to payroll, but it has a lot of our unique rules that are established through our contracts. So that's one we're not sure yet. But we need to fix it so it talks to payroll better before we decide whether we want to keep it or not. So I would say we've got to take a look at this on an individual case basis and, you know, basically do a cost-benefit analysis.
Mr. Chair, a couple more if I may?
Sure.
Mr. Cosmack, you said the closing the books for November as we speak. And then I'm just curious on a rough timeframe for closing out this month. I guess my general question would be, what would be our normal timeframe to close out at the end of the, at the end of the month? And will we be on schedule for closing December as we normally would?
Well, you know, we sometimes have to do this on a day-by-day basis. You know, we've found some issues this morning, so it's really hard to give you a specific date. I'd like to say we'd be able to do that by the break. I wouldn't want to commit to that, though. I would say early next month, certainly before the next meeting, the school board meeting, that's for sure.
I believe, if I can check... Mr. Chair, that's all I got?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Member Hopez?
Yeah, just, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just really want to commend the superintendent and her staff and Mr. Cosmack because this has, this has been a significant undertaking. And all of our staff have just put in a tremendous number of hours in working through these issues and really cleaning up the list. We've been at the table with Cyber and HTC Global now a number of times. And last week, we had a very productive meeting. I have, I think we've received a sort of verbal understanding with the parent company that I hope to get codified, that Cyber will be exiting and the parent company, the international company that acquired some of Cyber's assets, are committed to ensuring that the system meets our expectations. And thank you very much for all of your efforts and for the folks from the Chamber of Commerce that have been assisting us with this. It's been a, an incredible effort by everyone. So I just want to thank you all for the efforts that went into this.
Oh, thank you. It's been, I won't say it's been enjoyable. It's been challenging to put the puzzle together here and to help doing that. I've enjoyed working certainly with the people. It's been a challenge working with our implementation vendor, Cyber. But, you know, that's business and, you know, sometimes you have to be hard-nosed. I do, again, truly enjoy working with the people here, especially under the direction of the superintendent, who's been a fantastic supporter of this ERP project and pulling it out of the fire. So I truly appreciate the opportunity to work here. I wish you well. I think we've got a pretty good system and we're going to just make it better and better as time goes on. So thank you again.
Okay, I have just a couple of questions. And I think that Board Member Hopez expressed, you know, my feelings of gratitude to you and all those who have worked so hard to pulling us back from this edge. And, but I, the complaints that I've been receiving kind of focus on payroll and letters of employees who report, you know, that they got letters that, well, we overpaid you in June and July and you better, you know, cough up that additional or we're going to send you the credit reports or something, which is totally out of line, unacceptable, I'm sure to this board and the administration. But somehow that got into a program, which I'm sure is going to be cured like tomorrow, if not earlier. But that's where, I'm just telling you, the, you know, focus of, you know, complaints made directly to me, you know, from employees, and I'm reading, and I said, you know, this is just wrong. And I think they understand that I feel that way. And I'm sure every member on this board and the superintendent feels that way. And it's going to be corrected forthwith. And I thank you for those efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, no further questions?
I have one.
Okay, Board Member Golden has another question?
Sure.
Let's just talk about the elephant in the room. When this project began, it was estimated to cost about ten million dollars. It's now projected to cost twenty-four million dollars. You're the consultant, and I would like to know your opinion if, in fact, when we first decided to do this, there was a twenty-four million dollar price tag on it. We'd like to talk about the cost of things, but not the value of things. So I just want to ask you your opinion. Is this a valuable investment?
Well, I think there is value in this investment. I don't believe the magnitude of that investment was appropriate.
Okay.
I personally think that this could have been done for less than half of that twenty-four million. But, you know, circumstances are different. You know, there's a lot of reasons. There's reasons for problems on both the vendor side as well as the district side. So it's hard to point fingers at anyone in particular. I think it was a shared responsibility that we had these overruns. So, but I do think it's quite excessive in terms of the cost of this implementation.
Thank you for your candle. That is so very much needed. Appreciate that.
Okay, George, before you go, it seems like your remarks just a little bit earlier suggested that the district was ambitious or misled or about the number of modules, you know, that were purchased and not really in line with what other districts normally would, you know, purchase modules for, you know, various things. And also, the more modules you get, the more complicated it gets and adds to the cost that you just alluded to. And you're, if I understand your remarks, right now, is in hindsight, that's not something that would be considered wise and something to learn from that the, you know, for us or districts in the future to try to keep it a lot simpler in the software advances. And, okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, I, just a comment about that. I don't necessarily fault the district for buying the modules. I think it was a mistake to implement all the modules at the same time. You know, it would have made a lot more sense to implement payroll and to implement purchasing and the few modules surrounding them, get them working, and then add on. You know, once your staff understands the system that it's working fine and then incrementally add functionality, but don't try and do it all at once. Unfortunately, that's the approach that was taken, and that's why it's gone excessively costly. Lesson learned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your great efforts here. The, okay. Audit report, Dr. Agruzzo. Chair of our wonderful audit committee. Thank you very much for coming forward. Merry Christmas.
Good evening. Nice to see you, members of the board, Ms. Saunders. The audit committee met five weeks ago, so some of what I have to say may be a little dated and I'll update that as is necessary. First of all, we had a presentation from Moore, Stevens, Lovelace. They are the external auditor. Jeff Wolf and Joel Knopf were here to present the audit of internal accounts. These are the school building accounts. And what they found is that they offered you a clean opinion, which means things were done the way they were supposed to. The schools did a much better job for their accounts this year. There were thirty-nine findings, but those were spread over twelve schools, which means the overwhelming majority of the schools did not have any findings. And there were fewer this year, fewer findings, fewer schools that had more than five findings. So there's substantial improvement in that area. And they will be here in January to present all the details of the report, so I'm not going to go through all of that. They did have one district-level recommendation. One of the high schools has stocks in AT&amp;T, and board policy says schools are not permitted to do that. And so the district has responded that one of two actions will take place. They're either going to move the investment or you're going to have to change board policy. But the school needs to come in compliance with the policy. And you want to do that before next year because you don't want this to be a repeated finding. The audit committee did ask for some edits to be made into the report. Some of those are around the area of internal controls. The auditor did state that there are some areas where internal controls can be strengthened. We've asked them to specify exactly what they are so that there's clear information to the district. We've also asked them to add some statements regarding the types of investments that are used in the district. These are footnotes, and it's what should be present in an auditor's report. And Mr. Blitsko from our committee is working with them to do this, and they will have that updated information in January. We did ask for one addition that is typical in audit reports, but we've had some discussions regarding it. And that is called a subsequent event statement after the audit year. This is for last school year. As you know, you just heard a long presentation about ERP. And there have been indications that in some of our schools, there are some challenges. It is possible there could be audit findings next year directly related to the implementation of that software because the schools struggle to use it. For example, in some cases, they were not able to make deposits within the twenty-four-hour period. That's against policy, and so that would have to be written up as a finding. But we all understand today that is a direct result of the change in software. We've asked them to note that in the report in some manner so that there is fair warning about it, no surprises, but we also understand where it's coming from. We've also asked them that when they write the report next year to document that if they found this problem in a particular school and the school corrected it during the school year, that it has been noted that the finding has already been addressed. So it is a way to properly report the audit findings, but at the same time acknowledge that this was something unusual, something different for the school district and that they have taken proper steps to correct it. We just want you to be warned about it, so no surprises next year. And so we expect that that will be done, and the audit committee will monitor to make sure that that has all been properly documented. They did inform us about a fraud report, which you do know about, I understand. It was at Braden River High School, and they simply noted that it was handled properly. And so there are no findings related to that. Separate from the audit, this is a question that we have asked repeatedly on the audit committee, and it has to do with the balances that some of our schools are carrying. These are internal accounts. They do need funds at the start of a school year to begin their activities, and then they do fundraising. But some of those balances seem to be a little excessive. There's one school that's close to a half a million dollars. So we've asked superintendent, she has said she will be looking at this. Bring those balances down. They can cut down on some of the fundraising, perhaps run some projects for the schools this year. But we would like to see that those numbers come down a little bit. It doesn't seem necessary. In some cases, they're literally carrying balances that are greater than what they will spend this year. So there seems to be some way to balance that out and decrease that. And the last item concerning the internal audit is that the auditor's contract will expire once they finish the financial audit in January. We have recommended that the contract be extended for one year only because for next year, MSL will be doing the internal accounts audit only. You will have the auditor general doing the financials. And so they will be doing that portion only. And in addition to that, we have discussed on the committee that since so many of the schools do not have findings, we'd like to see a change eventually in how the audit is done annually and not necessarily have to go and test every single school. So that if a school has had no findings for a couple of years, you don't have to test all of the schools, just the ones that are repeated findings. And then maybe every three years, go back and test those other schools. We're going to recommend that that not, change not be done for next year only because, again, of the ERP implementation. We think it's important that they go back and look at all of the schools. And so that would be just for next year. And as I said, they will be here in January. They will report to you both the internal accounts as well as the annual, the annual audit of the financial statements. The internal auditor, Carl Riggs and Ingram, reported to us on several different audits that they have going on. The first one is about payroll. The intention of the audit committee had been for CRI to look at payroll. And as Mr. Cosmack was just discussing, what was in JDE, has it transferred over properly into the, excuse me, PeopleSoft? There are problems. He's already reported to you about the data discrepancies. The internal auditor got the reports from the district. They would review them, find errors, send them back to the district, and there'd be this back and forth going on. Helped the district fix the data, which was important, but that's not the role of the internal auditor. And so the audit committee has asked that we simply postpone any more work on the ERP until a lot of these issues are addressed. We anticipate in January, at our next meeting, we will discuss restarting that payroll audit. We think by then, all of the... We think by then, all of the data will be clean, and the auditor can test. It does not seem to be a good use of either the district staff time or the auditor's resources to be just cleaning up data. And so we thought we'd just step back for a couple of months and come back to it in January. They've also given us a pretty outstanding report about IT. We had Serge Jorgensen, who is from Silent. He is the subcontractor who works for CRI. And he has indicated there has been significant progress addressing many of the audit findings. There is a strategic plan in place that they are following. And what they've been able to do is to take all of those audit findings, there's about 40 major findings. They have categorized them as critical, short-term or long-term. It's a way to kind of just get everybody's head around, what do we do first? Because you can't do everything at the same time. But there are hundreds of items buried in those 40 findings. They've categorized them five ways. There's vulnerability management, asset management, passwords, roles, and permissions, data loss prevention, and backup. So those are the five areas that all of those findings fall into. They have reported to us that there is progress in all areas, which is a really broad statement to say to you. But as you know, this is very secure information. It cannot be discussed publicly. The district does have very detailed report about each of the individual findings. And we have, from our committee, Ms. Barbara Vedder, who actually meets with the district staff on a regular, and she is fully aware of all of those very specific findings so that she can work with the district staff about it and comes back to us. If there were any problems, you would be alerted to it. But they are making substantial progress, and that is nice to hear because for so long, we have been reporting. We need to do more. And for the last few months, it has really taken off. The, what we have also learned from the deputy superintendent is that you have filled the 12 positions that were vacant. You will recall that our last report, the audit committee had a pretty stern response to the district because there were positions you had allocated that had not been filled. And they are desperate for staff to work on these issues. They have all been filled, has been responded to very quickly since that report. We've also learned from the auditor, there's been a great deal of cooperation among the team members. And they've taken a new approach where it's not just the IT security team that's kind of trying to do all of this. They have involved everybody, all of the stakeholders, to make sure that this work is done, that everybody in the district, all the way down into the classroom, everybody buys into what's going on here, that management is fully aware of what is going on so that they can support it. So we are very pleased to see this progress being made at this time. We also just wanted you to know that there is an audit going on of the sales third task extension. You have asked us to make sure that that money is spent properly. They are gathering the data. I was just told this evening that they've actually been in the district. They expect that the testing of that information will be completed this week, and there will be a report provided in January about that. And the last item concerning the internal auditor has to do with the use of their hours. Under their contract for this year, they have 1,990 hours. And one of the tasks at the end of the school year, last May and June, was to determine where we would divide up those audit hours. Since then, of course, you've had the challenges with ERP, and the internal auditor has been asked to do some of the work in gathering data and information around what isn't working and what has gone wrong. To date, that has totaled 156.4 hours. We want you to be aware of that. We are monitoring it on the committee. And of course, for us, it's going to be, when we get to May and June, do we have enough hours left to complete the audit plan that we have presented to you? If not, if that seems that we have to make some changes in the audit plan or ask you for some adjustment, we will bring that back to you in the spring. At this point, we're not anticipating that, but we just want you to be aware of that. Mr. Cosmec just gave you a wonderful update on ERP, so I'm going to skip about two pages of my notes here. He did speak to the committee five weeks ago, and of course, he's presented to you twice. And I was taking notes as he was talking about all the progress that has happened just in the five weeks since he met with us. And so we are very excited to see so much improvement has taken place and that things are getting done, that payroll and purchasing and some other things are actually coming online and getting more accurate as he goes through it. We know that as each day goes by, more and more gets done, you get closer and closer to a clean implementation. The GL balances are important. They have the one year in, but having that, those other two years is going to allow you to run multi-year data so that you can actually track expenditures and things. We think that's really critically important. We do recognize the frustration that lots of people have had with this, things that haven't worked. We understand that there are some changes that do need to be made and that there are ways to simplify things to make them better and easier for everybody to use. We would offer one little caution to that. I don't know if it's little, but there is a caution to that. The committee has been very careful to recommend repeatedly that the program be implemented with fidelity. We are concerned because over many, many years, you've had a system that could not give you good information, that was a jumble of spreadsheets and different programs and things. Things didn't talk to each other. You couldn't get good data. You couldn't get good information. We don't want to chance that happening again. So we would simply urge, as discussions take place about not doing a module or modifying something or doing something different, that you proceed carefully to make sure that it will, whatever you do, does integrate with the ERP, that you can get the data and the reports you need, and that you're not going to ultimately end up in the same problem that you've had for the last decade. And so we would just urge caution there, and that people, it's not just this is easier for us to use, but people think ahead to, what am I not going to get if I do it this way instead of using the module as it's written? And carefully think it through so that as you make those changes, you know exactly what you're going to get, and it will give you what you need. And that's the only caution we would offer on, on that. We are working on a, an RFP, RFQ for new internal auditing services. Their contract has expired, will expire this year. We've extended it two years. And so we have committed to doing a new RFP to go out for internal auditing services. We expect that that will be finalized at our next meeting, and that, that should be done. There's a timeline that's been drawn up for the spring so that you would be brought that contract in plenty of time for the July 1st start of the next fiscal year. We are also looking at charter school audits. We've not done this before, but the district was very responsive. We requested all of the audits from last year from the charter schools. We are in the process of reviewing them, and we'll discuss them at our next meeting also. They are reported to you in the financial statements, but we wanted to also take a look at the actual reports this time and get a sense of how they are written. Are there any issues there that we should be bringing to you? At the last meeting, you made two requests of the audit committee. One was about tracking vacancies and board positions that had not been filled. It's not something typical for the audit committee to do, but it's done. Dr. Brown has actually presented to us a process that is now in place with weekly reports presented to management so that everybody knows what's vacant, what's the status of it, when will it be filled, or if there's a challenge in filling it. So at any time, the superintendent knows exactly how many staff are missing, in what departments they are missing, and if anything needs to be done because a particular department is not acting in fulfilling its responsibilities to get those positions filled. So we can avoid the problem we had with IT in the past. The second request you made of us had to do with procedures for ensuring auditors have access. What we want to tell you is that it's been like night and day. All of the auditor's requests have been granted. We've had no problems getting information. We did put a set of procedures together in case it should ever happen again. And so those have been approved by the audit committee, and it basically is three steps to it. If they're not getting something, we'll notify the deputy superintendent. If it's not taken care of, the next step is to inform the superintendent. And finally, it will come to you, and that's in a matter of days so that we can all stay on top of things and make sure the internal auditor gets what he or she needs to fulfill the audit responsibilities that they have. Our next meeting is in January, January 9th, at 2:00 in the afternoon. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, board members. Questions for Dr. Agusso? Okay, um, let me see down here.
That's okay.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
I was late.
I'm getting, trying to get used to this.
No, that was my fault. I was late to the speaker button.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Agusso, thanks for the report. We haven't seen you in a while. I had a thought that I wanted to share with the board. If you remember this conversation, this was when we were redoing our policies. And my recollection is, this was shortly after Ms. Carpenter had resigned. And Dr. Hopes, I forget if you had been appointed yet, but we had a discussion among the board about changing the policy to allow for, to have internal audit staff who are district employees, but who would, the wrinkle in this, the caveat was, but they would report not to the superintendent, but directly to the board. And I guess the proper way to make this request is to ask, ask the full board if they would join me in requesting the audit committee discuss that topic, have the audit committee debate it, maybe report back to the board on their opinion, on the wisdom of going that route. I know it, we had discussions about we could save cost if, if that, that function were school district employees. But again, the important part, the thing that made it work to me during those discussions was that, that staff would report to us, not to the superintendent, so that, so that conflict would, would not be there. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know how you'd want to address that with our board colleagues.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. This has been kicked around a little bit, it seems like, over the last, you know, couple of years. At one point, five years ago, the internal audit functions were done by staff of the district that reported to the superintendent. And in the eyes of some people, that presented a conflict in that it would, would employees who looked to the superintendent for employment or to those under him be offended by too thorough an investigation or something like that. And that, that's when it, kind of the roof fell in, you know, back in 2012. And so shortly after that point, it was decided by the board, we, we need to remove that doubt and go outside employees of the district, you know, for internal audit. And what Mr. Kennedy is saying is, well, there, there is some advantage to having employees of the district performing some of the internal functions that might save money as opposed to having it all done from outside for internal audit, if I understand what.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy is getting at. And it's never been on a workshop or a board agenda, to my recollection. But I think Mr. Kennedy is saying, why don't we do that? And, and also get some input from the audit committee as to considerations that we on the board might not be sensitive to, and maybe recommendations, you know, from the audit committee. Now, I, I, I think I may be repeating what you're saying in a sense, but taking it maybe one step forward. And I, I'll throw it around the days. I, I personally think it's a good idea. And does anybody have any objections to asking the audit committee to, to give us their thoughts? You know, put it on your agenda for your next meeting for the audit committee, and come back to, you know, the board, and then maybe we put it on an agenda for a workshop. Okay, board member, Hopes.
Mr. Meyer, I will, I will tell you, actually, Mr. Kennedy, the, the first meeting I attended before anyone knew who I was was an audit committee meeting. And I followed that meeting with a conversation with Mr. Shin. As you know, he and I were both on the USF Board of Trustees together and, and worked with our audit committee at USF, and explained to him that I felt we needed a process to begin transitioning the internal audit function to at least have, begin bringing staff on board. The audit committee, during my tenure as, as board chair, we have discussed this at the audit committee. And, Mr. Chairman, my suggestion would be that, that we add that as a workshop agenda, and we can, we can share those discussions with the rest of the board. And I can provide, you know, my inside experience at, at other public boards and how we handle the internal audit function, and at least one approach to beginning to transition, starting with, and I think the audit committee is in concurrence, starting with the board hiring an individual to serve as the board's internal audit sort of coordinator. And that would, would mitigate some of the problems that we had in the past with regards to getting information. So the audit committee has taken it up on a number of occasions. And I think that with a workshop with them, I think we can come up with a plan to begin transitioning. And it will save us money as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I, I don't hear any dissent to the idea. We're, we're talking next month, you know, sometime. And you mentioned earlier when y'all, you know, have a meeting, did you say the 9th?
It's the 9th of January.
Okay, now, I think our first meeting in January is what, the, is the 8th? Okay. And then our, our next meeting after that would, I'm guessing would be, you know, something like the 22nd? I don't have a calendar in front of me. I, I'm wondering, why don't we put it, a workshop for, before the second meeting that we have, you know, of this board? And at that time, we would have your thoughts and recommendations. And it could be kicked around with administration as far as the idea that Dr. Hopes was talking about, some employee of the district that would exclusively report to the board, but would be on the district payroll, if I understand the arrangement that was suggested. How does that sound? Pretty good? Okay.
Mr. Chair, the audit committee has on several occasions actually had discussions about this. And we do, as a group, believe that it is a good move for the district to begin to move some of those audit functions inside the district and address some of the concerns that people have about reporting. We did actually have something of a discussion about this in conjunction with the new RFP that's going out. And we do have it on our agenda to discuss further in January, so this is very timely. So we'll be able to report back to you and meet with you on the 22nd.
I think part of the report would be what functions that the internal staff would be appropriate to, you know, audit as opposed to some outside internal auditor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's what we have talked about, is what would be appropriate for, to be done within the district in, in the future. Not, not something automatically turning everything over to the district, but what transition you would do, what would be appropriate to transition, and then what kind of oversight would be in place for those pieces of audit that are not actually done by an outsider. And those are the kinds of things we've talked about, and we have committed to having that conversation again in January. And I think it would be perfect timing to meet with you then two weeks later and actually talk, discuss with you some recommendations and suggestions on how to do that.
Okay. Any, any other comments? I, I just have one question. You made a mention about there was, you know, concern by one of our auditors about the liquidity of some of the school investments. Is that, did I hear correctly? A concern about the nature of investments in some of, some of the schools?
It's one school.
Okay.
One school has AT&amp;T stock. And the board policy allows the district to have equities, but the school building is not supposed to do that.
Okay, that was just a concern. And the auditors think it should be in a more liquid form, I guess, like CDs or money markets, investments, something like that.
Or you need to change the board policy that allows the school to have. This was, this was a donation to the school. And so it was given to them, and so they, and there are requirements, and council would have to actually look at what it's all about, what are the requirements for that, and then inform whether there should be a policy change.
Okay, I think that board member, Hopes, has some comments or questions about that.
Mr. Chairman, the issue is that the board, board policies do not allow individual schools to hold equity assets. And this was a gift, and I, I think it's just a, an issue of what, what holdings they're allowed to have.
Right.
I think Attorney Dye.
Mr. Chair, yes, this, this is very similar to an issue that came out at MTC. Schools or campuses, they can't own anything. The, the ownership entity is, is the board. Now, now, if somebody wants to make a gift for the benefit of a school, it can certainly be held by the board for the benefit of a certain campus or a certain function or the marching band or what have you. But, but as far as who owns the thing, it has to be the board.
Okay.
So that's what, so that decision needs to be made.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're stockholders in AT&amp;T at this time?
Yes, it is.
I hope we're doing well. Okay, any other comments? Did you have some other comment you wanted to make? Okay, I don't, yeah, if you can click your button. But Mr. Kennedy's good mayor, too, so, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Doctor, I'm new, so I'd appreciate if you'd be patient with me.
Nice to meet you.
Okay. I'm just not quite so sure whether we are starting something new with the discussions, however long they've gone on, and we're trying to make a decision about what would be the best way to audit the workings of the school system. In your deliberations, do you all consider how this task is performed in other school board districts?
There are, districts do both. There are districts that only have outside auditors, and there are districts that have someone on staff who's actually doing a lot of the internal audits. You do have to have some external auditors. And so what we've talked about is kind of a mixed system.
Are there school systems that have mixed systems?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, in an effort to guide us, and since we now have three types, when you make your presentation to us, could we hear from you the pros and the cons of the types that are available? Because it seems like there was some discussion that was had years ago, and then it has come up now, and I'm not quite so sure what the impetus is behind all of that. But to make an informed decision now as to what would be in the best interest of the district, I would like to know what's the advantage and disadvantage to each type?
We can do that for you.
That's the first question. The second question is, with respect to the audit committee and the relationship that it has to the, is that the citizens' village? Or is that you?
No.
No, that's not you?
We have a separate committee.
Okay, a separate committee.
Yes.
So, but apparently the internal auditor has been helping to do some of the work that we needed to get this corrected. And I believe I heard you say that there might be an additional request for funding.
Okay, a couple.
Did I understand you right?
Let me just be real clear. We are a committee, we have a charter under the board to oversee the auditing that is done within the school district.
Okay.
This committee has been in existence for five or six years. I've been on it for three, just about three. There are seven of us who are on this committee. And we oversee the finances primarily in terms of the audits. So the auditors come, they report to us, we bring information to the board. That's primarily our function. The Citizens Advisory Committee has a different charge from this board. What I was speaking about has, is directly related to, we have an audit plan that we work out with the internal auditor. And at some point over a five-year period, the internal auditor is supposed to look at all of the processes in the school district. And so for this year, we're looking at payroll, we're going to look at some construction issues, the sales surtax we are charged with, and there's a whole list of things. And we present that to the board in the spring, that this is what we consider to be, what we think the audit plan should be.
What year are we in that five-year plan with you all?
We just put this together two, last year was actually approved, so we're in our second year of that five-year plan.
Okay.
So the 156 hours I was referring to, in the summer, because of the challenges or the problems that we had with ERP, the internal auditor was asked to look at some things that occurred in the implementation process. It was part of the investigation that is going on for, by the school district. And so he was asked to put some data together, to work with some staff, to do some other things that was not part of our audit plan. So this is of the 1,990 hours, this was 156 hours, which is about an audit, that was pulled out for him to do this special project. And what I do at every report that I bring to the board, I track the hours that we have used, how many hours we're using on each of the audits. And so I was alerting the board to the fact that we did pull 156 hours for something special. So we will be short hours possibly for other audits. And as the year goes on, we will look at that, we will make adjustments. It is possible that there will be no need for anything additional or any change, because some of our audits don't take all of the hours we've allocated. So this was strictly related to the internal auditor.
The only question I'm having is that in the middle of the five-year plan, we are now about to consider a change in the way we conduct internal auditing.
Yes.
And I'm just, I guess I'd really like to know, before we get to, what type of auditing we want to do?
Exactly.
Is the rationale for making that change? I think I heard the chair say that this came up in '12, which would be about five or six years ago. We're now in the middle, I guess, of the second five years, and we're being asked to consider changing the way in which we conduct internal audits. And I'm just needing to know why that is.
There are, there are pros and cons to doing it all those ways, as you have said. There are, when a district has financial troubles, you want things to be outside, because you want to make sure that you have an independent voice looking at everything you do. When things are running smoothly in the way they should, you can move some of those functions inside, because, first of all, they report to the board. The auditor and the audit committee would oversee that work also. But what it does for you is it allows you to get more done at a lower cost. So, for example, the audit of the schools, the internal audit we do of the schools, you could actually have someone inside do a portion of those audits. They would actually be able to be in the schools more often. They'd get more data and more information, and it would cost you less because you didn't have to pay an auditor to do that.
I think I heard you say that, I think I heard you say that the rationale with respect to an external auditor arises in the context of a district that is in trouble.
Yes.
So would it be fair to say, at this point in time, that we have become a district that is no longer in trouble and can take advantage of the use of internal auditors because that reduces costs? Is that a fair statement?
Mr. Mayor, for a moment.
I don't do things in yes and no's.
Yeah.
I would say to you.
Mr. Hope, you're up next, okay?
I would say to you that this district has made substantial improvement over the last five years and is financially sound and has taken all the right steps. I'm not, things aren't perfect, things still need to be done. There are audit findings that have to be addressed, but you're in much, much better shape than you were a few years ago.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board Member Hope's?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, we're moving beyond the audit committee's report and into the workshop topic that I think we're going to have in January. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Have a good holiday, everyone.
Okay. Let me, we've been in meeting for two hours now. Do you want to take a break down for 10 minutes for your public comment? Good.
I'm fine with a recess, Mr. Chairman, if you, I'll make the motion for a 10-minute recess.
We have a motion to 10-minute recess. It's seconded by.
I just feel like everybody's here and they're ready to talk, and they've got their notebooks in there, just, so.
Okay.
Yeah, can we do it after public comment?
Okay, everybody agree?
I mean, everyone's got their chair and they're comfortable, and they want to, let's just, I say we just do this.
We have some of the finest restrooms in Bradenton here. Okay, we're going to proceed with the meeting, and after public comments, then we're going to take a recess. Okay, I'm going to turn the gavel over to Vice Chair Messenger and to conduct public comment.
I know, well, I know, because there's 22 people. So I want to just, you know, I've got a whole lot of friends in here tonight, and I just want to help them out.
Okay. My typical spiel. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not a forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaint should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not an open forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. This is a business meeting of the school board, and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that the speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, we do have 22 folks on the list. So I'm going to start with number one, Mr. Gibbelina. And after Mr. Gibbelina, there will be Tora Levon Dennis. And I know I saw Mr. Gibbelina earlier. Is he out there calling Mr. Gibbelina? Is he coming? All right. Come on down.
So which one are we talking about?
This is just our public comment section.
Anything I want to talk about, right?
Anything that you would like to talk about that is correct, as long as it is education business.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, my name is Glenn Gibbelina, for the record. And I want to talk about, one, our energy policy. See if we've got a solar energy policy in place yet. Two, I want to touch base on our homeless students. And three, I want to talk about Ms. Saunders' contract, which I can, right? Talk about anything?
Sure.
All right, so, we'll talk about the renewable energy policy. You know, I'm a big proponent of that. Kind of been off-base a little bit, so I want to see where we are with that again. Let's not forget that renewable, by the way, is the number-one job in the country right now for job placement. And I'd like to see us move forward in that direction, in some shape or manner. Even a demonstration project would be fine. Two, homeless students, you're all aware of it. You know, I'm doing a program on that, and hopefully that will continue. And three, talk about Ms. Saunders' contract. It astounds me that it would take the Department of Education two years to investigate a problem that should take two weeks. I mean, the timing is just, it just, it just does not feel right. I think the character assassination of Ms. Saunders by the Department of Education is way off the reservation. She's been on a great job since she's been here. And I have suggested that you should keep her unconditionally. You should give her a sign-up bonus. And Department of Education, they, that's water under the bridge. That should have been eliminated a year ago, a year and a half ago. Certainly not at this crucial time in the board's decision in looking for a superintendent. So I'm going to weigh in on that, and I need you to consider that. And we'll move forward. The other thing I want to talk about is, if you want to increase your schools and jump them from Cs to Bs and Bs to As, I have one comment, and I've been teaching at Bay Shore a little bit. These things, you need to get rid of them. 25% of the teacher's time is saying, take earbuds out, no electronic devices, shut that off, quit sleeping. It's unbelievable that this thing takes over 25% of our teachers' time. As a taxpayer, I want the teachers to earn that 100%, we're paying them, and they can't do it with this obstruction right here. Get rid of them, get jamming, it's unbelievable. And I'll be back to talk about it again.
Thank you.
We smash these with a hammer.
Tora Levon Dennis. And after Ms. Dennis, there will be Shereen Gibson.
Good long evening. My name is Tara Dennis. I'm the president of the Sammaset Neighborhood Association. I'm here today about an issue regarding two schools. I reached out to the representative of my district, and we seem to not be getting anywhere with it, so that's why I'm here tonight. So my neighborhood is Sammaset, and it seems to be a forgotten about, left-behind neighborhood. So I'm here to represent that neighborhood. So first, I want to try to talk about improving the public safety specifically for the students and the drivers in the Sammaset neighborhood. The two schools that are in my neighborhood are Southeast High School and Sammaset Elementary. So the two things that I want to do, or a couple of things that I want to do for those two schools are the idea of colored crosswalks. It's a lot of traffic and a lot of speeding in both of those school zones. And in Sammaset specifically, we only have one crosswalk on 34th Avenue East. And it's a lot of speeding going on in that road. So my suggestion is to put a colored crosswalk on two intersections, which is 17th Street East and 34th Avenue East, and also 19th Street East and 34th Avenue East. So for Southeast, which is located on 37th Avenue East, the color crosswalk suggestion would be there and at the interest of the parent loop. Also, and specifically about Southeast, the residents feel like there's a lot of speeding going on on that road as well. So they implement a 20 mile-per-hour school zone on that road. Also, a school entrance sign with flashers along the frontage of the school. And we would like to repaint the Seminole arrows. So my request today is for this board to write a letter to the board accounting commissioner to submit my request, since they are county roads, because the last thing that we want to do is have a fatality due to speeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Shereen Gibson, and after Shereen Gibson will be Susan Harrigan.
Vice Chair, I'm speaking on behalf of a group. If it's okay with you, they can come down with me.
Yes, and I've been told that you get five minutes.
Yes. And Dr. Craig has some handouts of data for everyone. While she's passing them out, I have Connie Dixon, principal of Williams Elementary, Kathy Price, principal at Maaca Elementary, Elena Garcia, director of federal grants. Am I good? And Jackie West is out there, principal at Bay Shore Elementary, and then Dr. Craig, director of school improvement.
Good evening, Chairman Minor, board members, Superintendent Saunders, Mr. Wagner, and staff. My name is Shereen Gibson. I began my career 22 years ago as a teacher aide, became a teacher and an assistant principal at Daughtry Elementary, and then accompanied Dr. Nichols to Tillman to turn it around as it was considered a school under restructuring by the state. I remained at Tillman as principal and left it as the 19th-best Title I school in the state to become principal of Seagreys to gain non-title experience after 17 years in title schools. And was then transferred to Gullett to round out my administrative experience. You know me as the current director of assessments and accountability. I stand here today representing my colleagues behind me. I tell you my background because during this time, I have seen six superintendents and eight interim superintendents, numerous personal changes resulting in upheaval, instability, indecisiveness, disruption, and lower district scores, as shown in my handout. With our scores going from the lower left to the upper right, any data analyst would tell you that we're in an upward trajectory. The only thing that could stymie this upward momentum is fundamental change. Therefore, choosing a superintendent is critical. To further support my position, this year's first-quarter benchmarks are higher than last year. Though I'm not a proponent of interim superintendents, you wisely chose Cynthia Saunders, and her accomplishments in the six months have been astounding. After just one week as interim superintendent, she discovered a problem with the ERP system and called it out to the board. Together, you came up with solutions and were now saving money and on a path of having a system that works. If that wasn't enough, Ms. Saunders then looked at every operations department and reviewed them all. And though this was not her forte, came up with solutions for personnel, payroll, purchasing, technology. Together with the advice of the board, she promoted Mr. Wagner to interim deputy superintendent. Together with the advice of the board, she promoted Mr. Wagner to interim Deputy Superintendent of Operations, in our opinion, an informed decision. During this time, Ms. Saunders is not only superintendent, but is filling the role of Deputy Superintendent of Instruction, and has mobilized her department heads to pick up any slack during this transition. That is teamwork personified. I would like to note that all the problems that Superintendent Saunders discovered and subsequently found solutions for were also present in the last administration, but her common-sense approach and result-driven nature makes the difference. Even with all her accomplishments, Ms. Saunders has her detractors. Some say there's too much testing, others say she doesn't do enough for Title I schools. Let me debunk these assertions. Testing in Florida is prescribed by DOE as a result of people voting representatives into office who legislate these assessment decisions. Though we all have great respect for our advocates who want less testing, the best course of action would be to vote people into August, uh, office who agree with them. To date, less than two percent of classroom instructional time is spent on district and state assessments, which is well below the state's five percent mandate for limiting testing, you have the data. For special interest groups to decide they want a national search for superintendent based on the aforementioned is ludicrous. Title I schools have been a huge beneficiary of Ms. Saunders' term as Deputy Superintendent of Instruction. In the thirteen instructional departments under her, every single department has allocated staff to assist at all Title I schools, more than ever before. Let me simplify. With the shortage of teachers especially acute in Title I schools, fourteen-fifteen, we had sixteen F and D schools. Sixteen-seventeen, we have sixty schools, sorry, seventeen-eighteen, we have sixty schools, a tremendous improvement in title schools. The board agrees that Ms. Saunders is doing an excellent job, and you further agree that she communicates well with the board, she's trustworthy and honest. These are attributes that Dr. Vogel said are essential of a good superintendent. Let me add that she promotes teamwork and is tireless and has a fabulous work ethic. Because the aforementioned is the case, my colleagues and I are trying to ascertain, why would anybody consider a national search for a superintendent? Both Brevard and Sarasota promoted from within, and if one looked at interviews for Deval County, as I did, there are really no fabulous candidates out there. Therefore, we need to know what attributes, other than those, that make a good superintendent is the board looking for. I would suggest you must have those in mind, as you are talking about a national search. Furthermore, the supply and demand metric being the way it is in education, what makes us think that after defining these additional attributes, we will find the right candidate? More importantly, the average term of a superintendent in this district is three years. Can the district withstand the instability, the instability, the loss of morale, and the loss of an excellent interim superintendent for the unknown? Let's face it, it'll take you six months to a year to find a candidate, and it'll take two years for the candidate to say, to acclimate to the district and decide whether he will, she will stay, he or she will stay. It seems to me that you have more to lose than to gain by doing a national search.
Thank you.
We support Ms. Saunders, thank you.
Thank you. Susan Harrigan, and then after Susan Harrigan, Pat Stream.
That was very eloquent, mine might not be that. Anyhow, Chairman Minor.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that. And Reverend Golden, I've never met you, but I'm Susan Harrigan, and I consider you all friends. So I want to talk about Superintendent Saunders. See, it just rolls off your tongue. It, it fits. I met Cindy, I think, on your first day. She came to Stewart Elementary for a lunch with Mr. Mills, and she was wonderful. And I'm a person that, right away, I, I make a decision when I first meet you, whether, you know, you're good or bad, if it's not good, but I know, I, I have that sense. And I have some words to describe Cindy, and I think one of them we need to realize is she's loyal. She had a job offer, or has one, in Jacksonville. She could have left us for more money, I'm sure, but she chose to stay. So that means a whole lot. And she's honest. Everything I've asked her and have had help for, needed help for, she's answered, and it's been correct. And I think she's earned respect. What you did with this ERP system was amazing. You saw the fault and you cut the bleeding. I think she's intelligent, and that's obvious. I think she's qualified, which is a no-brainer, and she does have the guts to make right decisions. I think the newspaper articles today, sorry guys, but I think they were a bunch of hogwash, and I think it was dirty politics. And in Manatee County, I'm a native here, we can do better than that. That's just ugly. And if you do a national search, it costs money. I raised money because you all needed village money. So I went around and begged for money, so that we could advertise and get that passed. And now you want to spend thirty thousand to fifty thousand dollars on the national search? Where are we gonna get this money? This is taxpayer money. Cindy is the best thing we have, and we can't lose her. We have plenty of problems, and I think, right now, I want you to make the right decision. I do have to go home to an injured gymnast, and I will turn on the TV and count on all of you to keep Cindy Saunders here. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Stream, and then, um, I think I, uh, Pat Barber's next, but I think she said she was gonna talk on number seven, so I'm gonna go to Bridget Mendel, after Pat Stream.
Good evening to Chairman Minor, to my esteemed board, and to my superintendent, and to Doug. I am Pat Stream, proud principal of Rogers Garden-Bullock Elementary School. Rogers Garden is a Title I school with many challenges, but it has a really strong community presence and very involved parents. In addition to the state and our school district, many community groups are involved in helping my school be all that it can be, which includes St. Paul's Missionary Baptist Church, Bayside Baptist, Sheriff's Department, Bradenton Police Department, several ladies, sororities, retired educators who volunteer for us, the Initiative for Grade Level Reading, Soren For, United Way, Kiwanis Club, Girls Club, Big Brothers and Big Sisters. I share this with you as they are all a proud part of my school community. As I was talking yesterday to Pastor Roberts, who mentors some of my fifth-grade gentlemen and works with my graduation enhancement tech, he said two things that made me really stop and think, and it enhanced what I'm thinking about today. He said, "Miss Stream, remember what's in a person's heart comes out their mouth and tells you who they are." He also said, "People need to focus on the business they are called to." I thought about those things a lot today. I focused on the second thing he said the most, "People need to focus on the business they're called to." The superintendent's business is to focus on providing educational equity and excellence for every child in every classroom every day in our county. Ms. Saunders does this. Her expectations are very high for every school in our county. She expects school leaders to lead their schools to success. She holds us accountable for our leadership. Before we began the school year, she met with us, the Title I principals, talked through our plans for the year, and made suggestions to help us think through them more deeply. As soon as scores are completed, she meets with us again, reviews progress, helps brainstorm ideas to improve or increase student's success. High expectations and accountability are what makes the school system go from good to great. They open up doors to success and opportunities for our business, the schools and students we serve. Our goal in Manatee County is to have A, B, and C schools. Ms. Saunders has worked hard as our deputy superintendent and interim superintendent to make these goals a reality. My colleague has spoken to that quickly. Go. Mr. Hinckley.
Thank you, Chairman Minor and Superintendent Saunders. My name is Travis Hinckley, I am the reading resource teacher at Rogers Garden Elementary. Prior to coming to this district three years ago, I worked for the Florida Department of Education, and in that role that allowed me to travel around to schools across our state.
Six seconds.
Oh, sorry. And, um, in that capacity...
We had asked for five, could he finish his one sentence?
Since there's two people, is that okay if we allow them that additional time?
He's got like six words. In that capacity. We beg the board since...
It sounds like two.
Okay, go ahead.
Go for it.
In that capacity, I worked in a lot of schools, and I can honestly say that Ms. Saunders, as well as her predecessor, are the only, she's the only superintendent I've ever seen actively participating and working in Title I schools with administrators and teachers. I wanted you guys to know that and hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Bridget Mendel, and after Bridget Mendel, Ally Bergman.
I'm gonna start with the principal opening at Lakewood Ranch. Not a single female candidate for principal, and parents don't, or a person of color, and parents don't even get forty-eight hours to clear their schedules to meet the finalists. Another top-down edict from the superintendent. There appears to be a resounding message the board is sending to this community: Parents don't matter. Let me read you a quote. "Great school leaders build a culture focused on student learning. They confront mediocre teaching, they invite, they inspire, they support family, students, and school staff in ways that lead to improvement. They want to be trusted, not liked." By Nicole LaTeacher. Let's talk about trust for our superintendent. As parents, we cannot trust that our children are more than a score. We cannot trust that our children aren't being forced to tolerate excessive screen time. We cannot trust that our children will get twenty minutes of recess every day. We cannot trust that our children are not being overtested more than what the state requires. We cannot trust that our children's data is safe from hackers. We cannot trust that there are not corporations with direct access to our focus accounts. We cannot trust that our teachers are getting their proper pay and benefits. We cannot trust that our children are not tethered to computers when we say no. We cannot trust that our children are receiving developmentally-appropriate instruction. We cannot trust that our children are not being used as guinea pigs for ed-tech companies. We cannot trust that our children are not being forcibly remediated on personalized learning without our permission. We cannot trust that our children's curriculum is not being watered down. We cannot trust that our children will receive proper textbooks or peer-reviewed materials. We cannot trust that the exodus of teachers out of Manatee County will end. We cannot trust that our textbook monies will not be used as a slush fund. We cannot trust that we will not be bullied or lied to when we want to protect our children from high-stakes testing and ed-tech. We cannot trust that we are told the truth about progression plans or state statutes. We cannot trust that our teachers and our principals won't lie to us about the FSA and iReady. We cannot trust that Saunders is the most qualified candidate to do this job because you refuse to give us a national search. It's what this community was promised. There is no reason why we can't do a national search for a candidate that has a stronger background, a larger resume, and is highly, highly qualified. You, Mr. Hopes, told me yourself that we have hired more than one superintendent with zero experience, and you are not gonna have a new person sharpen their teeth in our district on the backs of our children. You told me that. And the rest of you said that you wanted a national search. You know this is wrong. And in regard to that six-hundred-dollar, eighty-ving voice, I'm not paying it, I want my kids' data, and give us a national search. We cannot trust.
Thank you, Mrs. Mendel.
We are parents, and we stand for something. We are players, and we are a part of the solution.
Ally Bergman, and then Kim Organic.
Good evening. As you can see, I am a proud Palmetto Aces student parent. I also have a middle-school, uh, daughter who's a Cambridge parent, or, excuse me, I'm her Cambridge parent, at Buffalo Creek. Earlier this year, I stood before you, and I urged you to choose a zoning other than B or C because of the inequity for Palmetto High School as far as SES numbers. I was told by more than one of you, with the exception of you, Reverend, that Aces would save Palmetto High School. We have to have bus hubs to do that. We've been promised bus hubs for North River next year when the new high school starts, and that makes sense, because we're gonna have juniors and seniors who go to Palmetto High School in the Aces program that will need transportation. What we don't have, and what I haven't heard any promise from either, any of you, are the equal number of bus hubs south of the river in Bradenton, so that those families and their brilliant kids can access our amazing program. So I'm here to ask you to please promise us those bus hubs, so that these students can access the Aces program and continue to make Palmetto High School amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Organic, and after Kim Organic, uh, Robert Christopher.
Good evening Board Chair Minor, Vice Chair Messenger, Board Members, and Superintendent Saunders. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the leadership of the Curriculum and Professional Learning Department. Dr. Robin Thompson, Director of Early Childhood Education, Dr. Vicky Williams, Director of Elementary Curriculum and Professional Learning, Anthony Lasada, Director of Secondary Curriculum and Professional Learning, Dr. Shereen Gibson, Director of Assessment and Research, and myself, the Executive Director of Curriculum and Professional Learning. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Our district has entered a challenging period during the last several months. Who would we find to lead our district and continue to move us forward at this time? It is our responsibility as district leadership to make decisions based upon what is best for our students. As both employees and parents, we recognize that our current leadership has proven a dedication to the students of Manatee County's academic success. While a lesser leader might have walked away and pursued other professional opportunities, this leader has refused to give up and take the easy way out. Please join us in supporting these valiant efforts in steering our ship towards achieving our goal of becoming an A school district. Thank you.
Robert Christopher, and after Robert Christopher, Judy Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board. I'm here to make comments on my own, I don't represent any organization or any group. It's my opinion, based on dealings with Ms. Saunders over the last year, that she possesses the following characteristics: integrity, and I'll list that first, intelligence, energy, and knowledge of our school district. I think she should be strong, be considered as a strong candidate for the position of superintendent. With respect to a national search, it's fine, and you can do it. As a businessperson who's run a successful practice here of over fifty professionals for forty-five years, I've looked for national people, I've brought people from Chicago, New York, New Jersey, and Ohio. The batting, the batting average is pretty low, because Florida's not sunshine and beaches. We work hard here, we're all accomplished in our own profession. We're good, and it takes a knowledge of the region and the area. Thank you.
Judy Bayer, and after Judy Bayer, Christopher Bayer.
Does he want to come first? Good evening, everyone. I'm Judy Bayer, um, thirty-eight years as an educator in this district, um, thirty-eight years of signing a professional ethical contract every single year. I know that a lot of people have come up, and I've heard great things about you, and I don't dispute them, but I also know that I have many friends, many colleagues, that don't feel that we need to settle at this time. A national search is what you promised us. A national search is what we want. She, she's more than willing to apply, that's not a problem. The problem is, is that a promise is as good as it's kept. You look at what the DOE says, very damning, and I'm not gonna repeat any of it. Transparency is critical. We are putting our faith in you as a board. We are hoping that the promise that you kept, you gave, is going to be the promise that you keep. Unfortunately, for us, but maybe not for you, since, since Ms. Saunders has been here, she really hasn't had to go through a vetting process. She hasn't had to apply for a job. She has not had to go through interview processes because she has been appointed to those positions. As a citizen of this county, I would like to see her resume, I would like to see the background data, I'd like to see the newspapers interview... I'd like to see the newspapers interview that, that information and get it to the public. We've always had that in the newspapers. We've always known what our top candidates were. Dr. Green just went through that. And we, we followed the Duval County paper. I don't think it's asking too much. And I'm just gonna close with this, if I can find it. This quote from Amelia Earhart. "The most difficult thing is the decision to act. The rest is merely tenacity. The fears are paper tigers. You can do anything you decide to do. You can act to change or control your life. And the procedure, the process, is its own reward." Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bayer? And after Chris Bayer will be Shirley Bryant.
Good evening, Board, Christopher Bayer. I'm just here to speak on the superintendent's search. The majority of the board seated prior to the current board made commitments, promises, statements on the record to the community that they wanted a national superintendent's search. Our children, our school district employees deserve the very best leader. One that's been vetted, has a dynamic demeanor, skill sets, the educational leadership qualities that we need. Taking the time, putting forth the effort, engaging the public for comment. As per Reverend Golden, we need to do a national search. I have a comment from a friend who was a West Point grad. This is from the Cadet Prayer. "Make us to choose the harder right instead of the easier wrong and never be content with a half-truth when the whole can be one." I would like this board to make a, a national church, a church, a search, excuse me. Make the, the harder right. Make a good choice. Thank you.
Shirley Bryant? And after Ms. Bryant, Colin Tripp. I should say Mayor.
Thank you. I'm Shirley Grover Bryant and I live in the city of Palmetto, Florida. And I too am a part of Palmetto High School. I was a graduate of Palmetto High School as were both of my sons and many of my nephews and great nephews and great nieces and so on and so on. I have a very vested interest in Palmetto High School and the success of Palmetto High School. The residents of the city of Palmetto and everyone that has fallen into the area that has been redistricted, the last time I was here, I was speaking in opposition. Excuse me. And the reason for that is because the, the success of a school is very, very important to the values of the properties within that area. It's key to the success of the values of all the properties in that particular district. And I'm going to be going out in the community and reminding everyone that I know the importance of that school and the success of that school. And though we're very, very proud of, of what's going on in Parrish and the new school there and we wish them every success, many of the people in Parrish are graduates of Palmetto High School. But I would tell you this, if you build the greatest school in Parrish, which I hope you do, but it causes in another area to have a Title I school, you have failed as a board. You need to invest in Palmetto High School. You need to ensure that Palmetto High School is the only one with the Aces program and that there are hubs provided countywide for that school. And also to make some financial investments in the property itself. Historically, I've lived here my whole life. So I know that Palmetto High School and the schools in Palmetto have been shortchanged. And in the capital improvement plan that currently exists, I know there's gonna be no change. We need to have physical changes that the public can see so that that school is a school of choice. Those choices are coming up, they're gonna be made. We don't have any time. We do not have any time to make the public aware that there is a commitment by this school board to make a difference and make sure that that school does not become a Title I school. It becomes more and more a school of choice and remains a successful school in Manatee County. If, I don't know how many ever look at the historical information, but I would tell you that the mother of education in Manatee County was in Palmetto, Florida in eighteen eighty-nine when Francis Howes, Frankie Howes, was the first principal and coach. And I would tell you that all started in Palmetto, Florida. Palmetto High School needs your support and we need to have a commitment that you're gonna make that a school of choice immediately. There needs to be commitments now, financially, the Aces program, and investment in that school so the public can see, the kids can know, that this school board in Manatee County is behind that school. No more Title I schools. It's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin Tripp? And after Colin Tripp, Rachel Kensdor. I'm getting better every time.
Good evening. Thank you guys for the opportunity to address you this evening. I really appreciate that. My name is Colin Tripp and I come to you as a proud product of the Manatee School System. But what I'm more proud of is that I have a junior at Palmetto High School who is involved in the Aces program. And I have three more in the pipeline behind her. So obviously very invested in what happens at Palmetto High School. My daughter went to a small community school for grades one through eight. So when we were looking at high schools, that was a big decision for our family. When we discovered that the Aces program was at Palmetto High School, we were thrilled to see that we had such a resource in the community and we continue to be excited about it. The Aces program has made all the difference for her experience at Palmetto High School. And because that's been something that's so important to me, I think you guys all agree that the Aces program is really unmatched in the county. It's got top content and the educators are just top-notch. That's why I find unconscionable that this body approved a districting decision that is certain to move Palmetto High School further down the line towards a Title I school. No consideration has been given towards creating a busing program with hubs throughout the county and this is something that we already have for Southeast High School and their IB program. So I would like to respectfully request that you consider instituting such a program, not only in the interest of Palmetto High School, but so that the entire county can benefit from this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kensdor? And then Jordan Barnador.
Board, Chairman Minor, thank you guys for giving us this moment. I'm gonna give you a tiny background. I don't know if you've noticed, but there's some red shirts in the audience. Just a few. But a week ago, we did, as we pulled together, kinda quickly, a town hall meeting. Well, we did that to kinda rally support in Palmetto because to echo the sentiments of Colin and Ally and Mayor Bryant, we're a really proud community. And I too am a product of Manatee High, uh, Manatee County, alright, Manatee High School. But that being said, which I love, I support all of our schools. But I've watched this over the last few years especially. I have not one, not two, but three children who attend Palmetto High. I have a senior and twin freshmen. And when my oldest started there, I didn't just like it, I fell in love with it. Those teachers pour into those kids, they love them. Not that they don't everywhere else, I'm sure. But this is my personal experience. Because of the Aces program, it has allowed them a completely amazing and awesome education. Now, I don't know if you remember, but I was here during the rezoning process. And I was on that committee. We, you, you gave us three committees, A, B, C. You gave us parameters, rules, boundaries, asked us to stay within a specific low socioeconomic non-race number to keep all of those schools. You then went promptly to B, which ignored all of those rules, all of them. Then on April tenth of last spring, you voted to carve out more of those dist, or those areas and give it back to Lakewood Ranch. Not that I begrudge Lakewood Ranch, I really don't. I understand all of their aspects of it. I think I said at the time, I wouldn't want my kid to go over the river and through the woods either. I understood that. However, those numbers continue to negatively affect Palmetto High School. Palmetto High School went from fifty-three percent low socioeconomic numbers to sixty-eight percent by the last calculations we had from the Committee A and Committee B. That being said, we are on a slippery slope to Title I. And we don't want to be another Title I high school in Manatee County. You're, if, if, if it would happen to slip to that, you're up to almost fifty percent of your high schools would be Title I. You can't want that. So just like Mayor Bryant said, there has to be a financial infusion into our facilities. There should be, we have plenty of room for expansion to expand upon our engineering program, our Aces program, the bus hubs we've talked about. We would love to know that Palmetto High would be exclusively the Aces program and the only Aces program in the county. That would be a help. But the middle schools need to be aware of their option that this is an amazing honors program in this county. And I think I said it before, but in that process of the zoning process, you gave us those rules, you gave us those parameters, you told us what to do and those were the rules. But if you're not gonna stand by your own rules, whose rules are you following? So I'm just asking to step up, stand up with us, and support Palmetto High in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jordan Barnador? And after Jordan Barnador, Brylin Barnador? Sorry, I said that with a question mark.
Good evening, Board. My name's Jordan Barnador, representative of Palmetto High School. I'm a product of Palmetto High School and the Manatee County Public School System. Pretty cool. I just wanted to come down here, thank you for your service to the public. It is appreciated and I do believe that when we all come together, we can do some great things. I'm here as part of the One Town One team, which was originally created by the Booster Club at Palmetto. I actually just started at a computer at my office and it's grown a little bit into something else. But we're excited to have everybody together and root for Palmetto in both the academic and athletic endeavors. I am the producer and co-founder of Tiger Vision, which is our athletic broadcasting thing that we started out about seven years ago. We started with a Sony Handycam. Now, in seven years, we've got a twenty-four-foot production trailer and last year we were watching fifty states and the twenty-nine countries. So what a tremendous thing for Palmetto. One thing I find, though, is Tiger Vision is a daunting task to do when I show up and do something. So I'm the first one there on a football Friday and I'm the last one to leave. The first thing I do when I arrived at Palmetto High School is I put on my rain boots because behind the press box there, it is a swamp. This is also where our freshman football team is expected to practice football. They cannot. If it ever rains there, it is an unacceptable facility. The next thing I do is I help set up portable speakers for our, our stadium there because the sound system at Palmetto High School does not work. The following thing that I do is I start to program our graphics in our truck, our trailer. It's the same graphics package as ESPN. And it's a pretty advanced system, but it cannot integrate with our scoreboard because the bulbs are so burnt out and eight is a six, a seven is a nine. Or it, it may have something to do with it, our scoreboard is from nineteen seventy-two. So I shouldn't have to come down here in a red shirt with my group of friends here and we just know this is unacceptable because as Tiger Vision travels around from school to school, we go, wow, man, this school is nice. Oh, wow, that's a, that's a, that's nice. Oh, that's, oh. And then you realize you're just below the standard. So I would challenge everybody to, as we go through here, and we are, we're all for the new high school on the other, you know, the side there north of the river. We can't forget about Palmetto. We have scoreboards that don't work, sound systems that work, flooding in our fields. Some of our stadiums are not ACA compliant. And we're always promised that you're gonna get it. You know, we get these emails, I see the emails and I hear the promises, that you're gonna get it, we're gonna take care of it. And I look at Manatee and their boosters come together with a half, you know, quarter million dollar scoreboard. Well, we could do that as a people too. But we're told, no, you're gonna get it. Lakewood Ranch, third scoreboard, what's the school, about twenty years old? Ours is from seventy-two, but you're gonna get it. Well, when you're gonna get it, does it take forty-six years to get it? Right? So those are our concerns. We would like to just, you know, I think a consultant said tonight that out of our twenty-four million dollar ERP project, that half of it may have been wasted. A scoreboard, a sound system, and a few things wouldn't have cost twelve million dollars at Palmetto High School. So I'll yield back and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Brylin Barnador?
I hate to call that kid. I'm Brian Barnador and I especially appreciate everybody here with the school board and the predecessors. You know, from my background, I went to Palmetto Elementary, then to Lincoln, and then to Palmetto High School. And I was well-prepared and I thank everyone here in the, in the county that went on to college, graduated from college, and I was well-prepared getting out. So I wanna thank everyone that has part here in the community. It's so important and the job you do is very long and I appreciate it very, very much. Now, I wanted to make a couple of comments. I was looking at some of the things with the new districting of the school. And as a lifer here, I'm not only concerned with what is happening now, I'm looking at the future, what's gonna happen, property values, those kind of things too. I'm a guy that's gonna be here, I'm gonna pay taxes here forever. I've been here in this town, I'm not from anywhere else. I'm gonna live here, I'm gonna die here, my medical bills before my trip to heaven, before the trip to the ALF. You know, that money is gonna be that last asset I have, my home. I'm gonna take that, sell it, and pour that into my medical bills. Well, I would hate to see that affected in a negative way.
So let's talk about some of the things, and I hope everyone can hear me here. Let's talk about some of the things that I've, I've been looking at recently. There is a high, the Wall Street Journal reported, there's a higher correlation between school performance and home values. And districts where home values may tend to be higher, they spend their money, their funding more efficiently. That's a big duh. But in addition, the higher correlation between availability of school data has led more families searching for homes based on the quality of the schools in the neighborhood than ever before. In this state, when this started, home values were directly impacted by the new system. So from going from an A-rated school to a B-rated school in two thousand and ten was ten thousand dollars per home. The difference between that small change. Now, if you start talking about C going to something else, we're talking about the numbers now, as this grading system has continued over a number of years, the gap has widened. Now, home values could vary by anywhere from fifty thousand to three hundred thousand per home. So it's very important, and I look at the different allocations of some of the things. We're gonna have, like with the LES, we're gonna have the language challenged student here, the highest number by far in, you know, the county. And I look at schools of similar type size, you know, at eleven point five, seven percent. So in, all this is got, is based on test results and scores. Well, test making, you know, test taking, we're gonna have test guessers. If you can't read and comprehend the test, that means eleven and some, out of every hundred students can't even comprehend the test. Well, how are they gonna do? And if you look at the ratios, we're gonna have now ESE gifted three point eight percent down to that level. Other schools, similar sizes at fifteen percent. But when it comes up to score versus score, school versus school, let's say you got two thousand in a school and you have fifteen percent of them that are qualified, these high achieving students over here versus Palmetto. We got eighty versus three hundred. We're gonna be graded score to score. How does that ferret out? And I've looked at the data and I just, I've been very, a little discouraged by the data. I am here, I will continue to pay my taxes. I'm very proud to be a Palmetto resident.
Thank you.
Very proud of my school and the things we do and I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keenan Wooton? And after Keenan Wooton, Rodney Jones?
All right, I'm back. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. Yesterday, Lecter Lee Middle School, our soccer boys, won the two thousand and eighteen middle school championship and they went unconquered, okay? I'm the athletic director there and I'm very proud of our students. We manage the most critical time in a kid's life, middle school. I was a high school guy, came down to middle school because I wanted to reach more students. As athletic director, we make, our supplement is one thousand dollars. And that's about forty-three bucks a check, okay? And we manage seven sports. We're there all night. No one's giving us any kind of pat on the back, we're there. And as athletic directors in this county, we feel like we're worth more. But I really wanna bring our kids down here and congratulate them and I'll be reaching out to someone in January. Second, Johnson Middle School. Louise R. Johnson is an East Bradenton legend, if you, if you knew her. I had the pleasure of knowing her, okay? She was a matriarch of that community. She was big in that community. She was Title I support before Title I even existed. She had tutoring at our church. She founded the first 4H program in our community. She was a matriarch of our community. I don't want that school to be named after anyone else. Everyone takes from the urban corridor in Manatee County, everybody knows it. I take my jog every morning, I'm seeing kids waiting out, ready to catch a bus. Our neighborhood is gutted. That's something that we want, that tradition of that school to be her name and not change. We love Wakeland, we love everything that was going on there. But Louise R. Johnson, these kids need to know who she is and they need to know her full name on the school. So I'm in support- So I'm in support of Louise R. Johnson K-8 International Bachelorette School. Third, minority teachers. About, when I first started in this district, I sat on the Minority Task Force years ago, then that got disbanded. We used to actively recruit minority teachers. We used to go to FAMU, Bethune-Cookman, with contracts in hand to find minority teachers. Where'd it go? It went away. It disbanded after the district went through change. We need minority teachers and administrators in this district every day. I just want you all to consider that. Louise R. Johnson K-8 International Bachelorette School, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rodney Jones, and after Rodney Jones, Jessica Patterson.
Long wait. Yeah, greetings to the board chair, and board members, and Ms. Saunders, and staff. I must say that this is one of the few times that I have to agree with Mayor Grover on her assessment of the board. I'm also feeling that we have failed this community in many areas, especially as it relates to an appropriate superintendent. I think we're taking a very short-sighted approach. I heard a lot of accolades here, but there are equal number of complaints. I attended the workshop last Tuesday, I was disappointed in the affairs that went on there. There was not one concern or one issue of liability raised with Ms. Saunders, not one. And that is, that is a sad testament to the vetting process that we entered into, and I'm gonna, I have public records requests at a meeting so we can show it to the community. It was absolutely shameful. Many of the board members had acknowledged that there were issues with Ms. Saunders, and they didn't bring them up. Ms. Saunders, and I can only use the language that's been given to me, and board members have heard this language, many people in the district view her as a bully. They view her as ruling by intimidation and force, and there are a lot of complaints about it. So we continue to push forward, we've negated a national search, and we negate that national search. You know why? Because immediately, Ms. Saunders will be overshadowed and outclassed by more qualified candidates. That is a fact. And so when we, when we move with this, we better be very prudent, because there's more coming. You get, just got a complaint from DOE, and I keep putting it on the record, because we would much rather handle these things internally, but I don't know whether it's because I'm black, or, you know, a parent, we hear people complain about parents, voices being heard. We've raised these issues to the district, we've asked for professional, Office of Professional Standards investigations, those investigations have been denied, and so we have no point now at this juncture but to take those, as others have, to the Department of Education. We've got email chains to substantiate everything I'm saying here today, and so if that's the way the school district wants to do it, that's the way we'll do it. You know, so we'll ask somebody from outside to come and vet these issues, because the school board itself has turned a blind eye, a blind eye and a blind ear to the things that the community has brought forward. Now, Ms. Saunders, this is no personal attack on you at all, I just want what's best for the district, so I don't want you to feel personally attacked at all, but what we attack is a system that continues to allow people to go unchecked, just allow people to do whatever, especially at the top level. When we talk about money for the national search, how about we take back some of that $150,000 that nobody knew about, that Ms. Saunders authorized and gave to our top-tier staff? The public didn't know about it, so let's talk about transparency. You know, that is, we haven't vetted that, but that is a word that I think some of the board members know about it, no one has said a word. So I'm not sure, like, how the board is getting their information, but whatever processes that you're using to get your information, you may want to improve them, because you're being, I got five minutes, I'm representing NAACP. We, we need to do a better job of getting information, because many of you don't even know what's going on. Obviously, there's an extreme disconnect between you and the staff and personnel of the school district here. We've listed Mr. Hope's, with all his business acumen that he brings to the table, absolutely shameful, your vetting of this process. It's been a constant push to push Ms. Saunders through, and we just don't believe that it's the best. And what's gonna happen, I'll speak this to you, Ms. Saunders, I'm born and raised here, I'm generational here, I'm from a family educated, and I've seen it 100 times. These complaints are gonna come in. Each one that comes in, you're gonna be more diminished, and your professional, your professional career is gonna be damaged. You're, we're gonna get to a point here in very short order, and I'm playing with this, and I'm speaking it. We're gonna get here to a point in very short order, that your credibility is gonna be so damaged, you'll never be a superintendent anywhere, listening to somebody up here that doesn't care when you're gone. So if you care about your family, you care about, you better think long and hard about what you're doing, because you're gonna get bruised up here in Manatee County, just as so many others have. And it's the truth, and they'll move on, and they'll leave you behind.
We're not gonna allow threats to be har-
That ain't, that ain't, that's not a threat, brother.
You're gonna have to leave and escort it out of the building.
Well, let's do it, Dave.
Mr. Jones, you're a good friend, a good person, but that's not permissible.
That wasn't not a threat. That wasn't a threat. That wasn't a threat.
You're gonna have to adopt or leave right now.
I'm gonna have to what?
You're gonna have to withdraw, you made threats about-
What, what was the threat?
It wasn't, what, what, what was your-
What's the threat?
What was the threat?
What was the threat?
Explain the threat.
Explain the threat.
Go on, get it over with, Mr. Jones.
Explain the threat. No, you explain the threat. You explain, you explain the threat, Dave.
Mr. Chair.
Explain the threat.
May I speak?
You made an accusation, so explain it to me, so I understand.
Mr. Jones, hold on just a moment. Mr. Chair, may I speak? May I speak? Yes, you may. All right. I would like to hear what Mr. Jones has to say. He has 56 seconds left, and not for 56 seconds are we gonna put him out, I don't want to be a part of that, and we're not gonna stop him. We're gonna listen to him like we listen to everybody else that is coming here tonight, even though it might not be popular. We're gonna listen to him, that's all. I would like to see that. Now, if somebody else wants him to be quiet, that's fine, but I don't think you ought to exercise your authority like that, that's not good.
Yeah, and this is, this is-
I'm sorry, now just a second, Mr. Golden.
Let me finish?
What I heard, and the question was asked about a threat, and I heard Mr. Jones say the words, you know, to, to the superintendent, "Well, there's gonna be all sorts of things coming up against you."
That's a fact.
Okay.
So where's that threat? So where's that threat?
I'm sorry, you're out of order. Now, you can continue, and you've heard my opinion about what you said, and you know what is not acceptable, so please continue, Rodney.
All right, thank you. This is the second time I've come up with a counteropinion, and every time anyone comes up with a counteropinion than what this board thinks is important, you're immediately shut down. I was shut down for stating facts in the workshop, because it was a counteropinion to everyone else. So you know what, just like I said, we'll just send it your way and let you deal with it then. And Dave, I think you're a sellout. Tell you to your face, and if you wanna talk about it outside, I tell you outside, you're a sellout, brother. We're gonna have a hard time coming back our way, bro. I'll tell you that right now.
Remember that.
We have supported you for a long time, you're a sellout, man.
Jessica Patterson.
You're a sellout.
And after Jessica Patterson, Brian Bustle.
And you know what, I ain't even gotta wait, you're straight sellout, bro. And Ms. Saunders, I told you that out of the love of my heart, to help you. These people gonna spit you out. They've done it a million times, and you're gonna be out put nothing, don't keep moving, they've done it a million times. Don't be a fool.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Jessica Patterson. Welcome, Reverend Golden, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm a Lakewood Ranch resident, I have three children, I have two in the public school, I have one in private. I moved him into private this year, because I don't have a lot of trust here in the Manatee school system. I moved here from New Hampshire two and a half years ago, and it's a stark difference on what happens here, and how much, you know, we studied schools and tried to figure out where to, you know, where to go to the school, where to go to the schools. Okay, Lakewood Ranch, those are the schools, they're A-rated. And I do love our principal, I do love our teachers, but I know that A-rated is just a zip code test, okay? It's just a zip code test. We are, live in an affluent area, and our kids test well. And that does not happen, obviously, all over Bradenton. I am here to voice my opinion over hiring interim Superintendent Saunders for the permanent position. You all put in the contract, we put trust in you, we voted, and we put trust in you that you would, that she was not able to apply for the position. We owe it to our community, our children, our teachers, to do a national search to find an experienced superintendent that has an exemplary resume, who can lead Manatee out of this dark cloud that we are in. We need to have trust in a superintendent, and we need to have trust in our school board. And the decision that you are doing right now, which it seems to be going, we don't have trust in you. How can we? Do you see children as more than data? Do you, are they more than a test score? Because that's what I feel here. That's all we are, is test prep. The testing is twice what is the state requires, and it's just continued. Computer-based testing is continued, and it just keeps on rubber stamping, no one ever seems to know what they're even approving. We don't have paras in our classrooms, we have one para for two grades. Also, I wanted just to stay under the Bill of 7069 that was passed in 2017, it stated that children with disabilities such as dyslexia must have evidence-based and multisensory product to support these children. The only products that these kids are on are, is iReady. iReady is neither evidence-based, impartially reviewed, or multisensory. Why are these kids on iReady? Why don't they have a product when it is state mandated to have something that is going to work for kids with dyslexia? I read it, Curriculum Associates has stated that they have no research that even helps kids with dyslexia, and these kids that are in dyslexia, their scores just keep on going down when they're on it. We're not happy with the status quo, and I hope that you will decide to do a national search and find an excellent candidate. And if she applies, she applies, but let's see what's out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Bustle, and then finally will be Priscilla.
Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Here's, I stand here as a Palmetto High graduate, I stand here as a parent of four students who, my own kids that attended Palmetto High School, and I stand here as the principal of Palmetto Charter School, two blocks away from Palmetto High School, who is very concerned about the future of this school that we all love here. And I want to see the very best of this, for this school, I want to see the types of things that have been promised actually come into being. I've been in this community for 50-plus years, and I've seen those types of promises made, but kind of forgotten over time. The scoreboard that was mentioned earlier is indicative of those types of unmet promises. And I want to see Palmetto continue to be a great school. I want to see those bus hubs that continue to bring kids that are not just ACE families, but legacy families that want to continue to be a part of that great school and community. You know, one thing that's unique and exclusive to Palmetto is, it's the only city in our county that has a school named after it and is within it. That school means so much to the community of Palmetto, and I say that because I grew up with it, and I've been a part of it, and I continue to be a part of it. And I want to know that the students that I send from my school, after they complete the eighth grade onto high school, will have a great choice with Palmetto High School. If Palmetto High School diminishes, my school will diminish, and I don't want to see that happen. We love this school, we're here to support it, and we hope that this board will continue to support Palmetto High School, not just in the long term, but in the very short term as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, the honorable.
Just to let you know, I've already texted our public works guy about painting the crosswalks in San Francisco, if you're still here. I'm here supporting my community. I am a Palmetto High grad. My mom and dad were Palmetto High grad. My grandfather moved here, I don't know if he graduated from Palmetto High, but he had an education here in Manatee County and went on to the University of Florida. We have always been somewhat left alone on the north part of the county. Notice I've taken North River out of my lexicon. We have, we, to be honest with you, it's never bothered us too much. Pretty much, y'all leave us alone, we're fine, but you're not leaving us alone anymore. You're changing everything. Development's changing everything, the whole county is changing, and we have to work with it. But to take, to make the new school, which I am very happy to support also, and then to put Palmetto High School at a disadvantage because of that new school, that's just wrong. I'm not smart enough, I'm not an educator, I don't know what the answers are, but to just say, well, we've never taken care of it. You know, I know Jordan back there, and trust me, I've known his family a long time, you know, when we were in high school, we just, we, you wore shoes because every time it rained, you had to take your shoes off. And well, why? Because of things built in the swamp, always has been, his life. We get that. We wouldn't mind it so much, except, you know, everybody else gets all of the nice stuff. I was watching the scoreboard in 1972, and, you know. Also, also know, we did a lot of work on the school back, I want to say, what, '87, '90, back in there. And I told some people, you need to do some certain things, because there's bad land here. I know what, I'm all about the land. We ended up not getting a new auditorium, because they didn't do what I, what I asked them to do as far as soil samples and stuff, because, you know, you don't know what you're doing. It's one thing, everybody in our community, we're together. I've got relatives out here right now that are supporting this thing right now, and we have to work together. And let me tell you something, the north part of the county has realized that the only way we're gonna get attention is by working together, and that's what we're gonna do. We're supporting a new high school, which we will come up with a name that we all agree on, and we are supporting that Palmetto High becomes something even better than it is today. And just to kind of let you all know, we're not happy with it going towards Title I. So just letting you know, that's where we're standing, and I'll see what I can do about getting that crosswalk painted. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes- I've seen the little baby. I can't see any of their names for the public hearings, so. Bring your baby. You're a brave soul that sat through this meeting for all those hours with that little baby.
I think that's five minutes, that's two people, isn't it?
Does he, does he, does he get to comment, too? Sorry, do I start? Yeah. Hi, my name is Tyne, and this is my son, Dean. My older son, Sammy, is a very active four-year-old, and he is home with my husband, because there was no way he was gonna sit through this. And that's actually why I'm here today, is that my son will be entering kindergarten next year, and we live in Harrison Ranch, and we are very hopeful that Harrison Ranch will be zoned for the new Barbara Harvey Elementary School. And it's very important to us that members of Harrison Ranch community get to go to a elementary school that is in our town of parish, and that they will be able to go to elementary school with friends and neighbors. So as obviously you all know, currently, our neighborhood is zoned for Blackburn Elementary, and actually, at this time, there are 219 elementary school-aged children who live in Harrison Ranch, but only 49 are enrolled at Blackburn. And being zoned for this new school would mean that there's shorter bus rides for the children going to Blackburn, shorter car rides and commutes for parents and caregivers who drop their children off at school. But most importantly, it would mean that the children are going to school with friends and neighbors who live in their neighborhood. We also know that there is construction plan for I-75 and 301 that's supposed to be coming up here in the next year or so, and that's only gonna add to traffic and commute times for the children getting to Blackburn. And I honestly think this is probably one of my biggest concerns. I rode the bus starting in kindergarten, and I'm hopeful that both my boys will be riding the bus to school, and that, you know, we're asking these little children to be on the bus for potentially longer than necessary for a longer commute. There are actually studies that show shorter commutes are better for kids in terms of school performance, and this also means that in the afternoons, when they get home, they have more time to play outside, to be able to work on schoolwork, and to have dinner with their families. The effort to be zoned for an elementary school in our community is not exactly something new, it's been going on for quite a few years, and back in 2013, some of the parents of our community started conversations with the school, with the school system, trying with the school system, trying to figure out why we're zoned for Blackburn. Because we have Mills and Williams, which are both much closer. And with the addition of Barbara Harvey, we will now have three elementary schools that will be much closer to our neighborhood than Blackburn is. So, we're excited about the new elementary school because it can alleviate the overcrowding that we know exists at Williams and Mills. And again, would be a neighborhood school for our children and would be closer. So, we would like to thank you for everything that you do and for taking the needs of our community seriously. And we do hope that you will see the benefit of children having a shorter commute to get to school. Excuse me. At this time, we actually have over 400 signatures from residents of our neighborhood in hopes that you will please zone Harrison Ranch for the new Barbara Harvey Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That was a really good question. There might be folks signed up for comment during the public hearing part. And that will be next. I heard some people say, "Wait a minute, there's other people signed up." If you signed up for the public hearing, then I will call your name when we get to the public hearing. But that concludes the public comment section for our meeting.
Okay, we'll take a ten-minute recess at this time. So, we're recessed at this time. Okay, at this time, we're going to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the board to hear public comments regarding proposed changes to policies 1210, Standards of Ethical Conduct, and adoption of new policy 8805, Religious Expression in Public Schools, and answer questions related thereto. Are there any people signed up to speak regarding this?
Yes. And I would like to remind any speakers that it is only on the policies that are set forth today on ethical conduct and religious expression in schools. And with that, I will start with Mr. Gibalina.
So, what I propose to do here, I didn't have time to run home because the Board of County Commissioners kept me late this afternoon. So, as I look at this policy, the standards of ethical conduct, what I did is I took the words administrator and put in parent and teacher, parent and student. So, what I see in the classrooms, that there's no accountability, enough accountability from the parents or the students themselves, the way the teachers are disrespected in class. And it's got to stop. So, I would take this policy and insert the student's name where it's an administrator and teacher and the parent's name. And they need to sign this. If the teachers have to sign this policy, then the students and the parents should be equally responsible for their students' actions. And also, parent-teacher conferences. There's not enough engagement of the parents for the students at school. And there's got to, you know, and there's all sorts of reasons. You know, they're both working, I get it. But they need, it starts at the home. It's not the teacher's job to babysit and discipline these children and these young adults. We pay teachers to teach. So, we got to get rid of the cell phones. We got to get more engagement into the teachers, I mean into the parents. And we have to come up with a policy that the parents sign in front of the teacher with their students. I will tell you this, when I was going in grade school, my mother used to come to school with a yardstick and give it to the teacher. And say, "If he gets out of hand, you have my permission to use that." my permission to use that. Those days are long gone because of our legal society, but the point is, we can do a better job. I just see a lot of time, a lot of, a lot of teachers' time disciplining with the cellphones and the backtalk and in everything else, that it disrupts the rest of the class. So, you can only call the principal so many times and yank that kid out, because that's not the root of the problem. The root of the problem is with the family. So, until you correct the family situation with those students, they're going to be like wild Indians, they're going to continue to do what they're doing. And, and I'm very disappointed in, in, in what I see. So, hopefully, we can, we can change this policy, have the, have the parents engaged, have the students engaged, and this is, this is a serious matter. Education is a serious matter. You know, we're, we're spending $750 million a year to educate 49,000 students, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And because this is a public hearing, even if you did not sign up for public comment, you are welcome to come and forward and speak on this particular, these two particular policies. Are there any other takers? Okay, with that, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Messenger. We're going to proceed then with first policy 1210, Standards of Ethical Conduct, changes. Do I hear a motion to approve the proposed changes?
So moved.
So moved by Vice Chair Messenger.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did you get a recommendation from the superintendent?
I'm sorry, it's my mistake, too. I apologize. Do we have a recommendation from the superintendent?
I do, thank you. I recommend the approval of the amendment to Policy 1210, Standards of Ethical Conduct and Adoption of New Policy 8805, Religious Expression in Public Schools.
So moved.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Dr. Hope.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Chair Messenger and seconded by Board Member Hope. Is there any discussion? The chair hearing none. The chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And register your vote, and let's see. I'm not getting it on my screen, but you can.
Mr. Minor, could you just, I'll take that vote and add it over here.
Okay, fine. I'm having a computer problem. We're going on to the next, Policy 8805, Regarding Religious Expression in Public Schools, and answer to questions thereto. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
I think we did it all.
Okay, she did that. Is there a motion to approve this?
It was already moved. We did them as a group.
We, yeah, we did it in one lump.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, congratulations, we've approved both of them. We're very efficient here. At this time, we're going to have a public hearing regarding, excuse me, the adoption, don't we have some other?
I think we're moving into the public hearing for.
Policy 5120, Student Assignment, and we're going to have a public hearing concerning that. Is there a, is there any public comment regarding Policy, Adoption of Amendment to Policy 5120?
Yes. I have three signed up, and after those three, I will move on to anyone else that would like to speak. First is Brian Cashman.
I guess we ought to have superintendent recommendation at this time.
I think that comes after the public hearing.
Okay, well, come after our.
I mean, after the comments.
Yeah.
After public comments, okay.
Good evening, Merry Christmas. First of all, I just want to thank all of you for serving as board members. I know how much time it takes for you to invest in a school district. Having spent 32 and a half years in education myself, I appreciate everything that you do and sometimes the things you have to put up with. Members of the Board Administration, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening concerning the zoning of the Barbara A. Harvey Elementary School. My name is Brian Cashman. I'm a retired high school principal from Pennsylvania, a resident of the Harrison Ranch community, and a grandfather of two elementary students. I am not, however, the general manager of the New York Yankees, even though we share the same name.
Thank you.
It is very important to the Harrison Ranch community that our elementary school-aged children be zoned to a school in parish, so that they may be allowed to go to a school that is located in the community in which we reside. We have a strong sense of community and would like as many of our children to be able to attend school with their neighbors and friends, as I'm sure many of you did growing up. A wish that we feel is reasonable and logical for both the children of Harrison Ranch and for the school district overall. Currently, our children are spread out amongst several schools. As you can see, our children are not experiencing the same camaraderie and community that many of us had as children, where the local children all went to the same school and knew and played with their neighbors, something that is essential to our children's development. I don't have to tell you how important a neighborhood school is to a community. I think you saw some of that tonight with the Plameno folks that were here. Much of the identity and connectedness of a community is enhanced by the neighborhood school, not to mention that the travel time to and from school would be reduced for our children. Please understand that this effort to be zoned to an elementary school in our own community of parish has been in effect for several years. We hope that you'll agree with us that this is an ideal time to correct the zoning issue that has affected our students, and that you will consider zoning our community to Barbara A. Harvey Elementary. I appreciate how, how difficult zoning a new school can be, and that you have much to consider in making these decisions. I hope that you will take into consideration our situation in Harrison Ranch. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you on these concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gabelina.
Back again, I'll make this short and sweet. I concur with the, the previous gentleman, and, you know, schools are a local area. Again, I've walked all of my schools, elementary, middle, and, and high school. And community is important. Shirley, Mayor Shirley, said it eloquently, you've heard enough testimony tonight, the importance of, of the zoning, the proper zoning, so I'll leave it in your competent hands and leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I'm going to open up to anyone else that would like to come and speak. Any other takers? Okay, with that, I guess we conclude public comment.
Good job, Vice Chairman. Okay, I'm going to close the public comments and public hearing, and we're going to bring up for consideration approval of Amendment to Policy 5120 about student assignment based, and ask if there's a recommendation from the superintendent.
Yes, sir, I recommend the approval of Amendment to Policy 5120, Student Assignment, based on the recommendations of Subcommittee B due to the opening of Barbara A. Harvey Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice Chairman Messenger, seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there discussion?
If you don't mind.
Okay, Vice Chairman Messenger.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that for the folks here that are from Harrison Ranch, that the plan that has been put forward by Committee B does include Harrison Ranch for Barbara Harvey Elementary School, that she's in the house. And so, I just wanted to reiterate that, that that is part of this plan, that we are hopefully going to approve unanimously tonight. That's it.
Okay. Board Member Kennedy?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to recognize that Ms. Harvey is trying to hide in the back of the room, but, Ms. Harvey, I just, I just need a thumbs up or a thumbs down on this.
Oh, stop.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Former Chair.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved, seconded, we've had, you know, comments, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and register your vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, nay, and register your vote. It's unanimous, five oh in favor. Okay, thank you.
You need to vote either yes or no.
I also said I wanted to speak, but I was.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, Board Member Golden wishes to speak regarding this, and we'll go back and vote after this.
It's way too late now.
Okay. Thank you, we had some technical problems here. All right, next item of business is approval of minutes, and the.
You know, I, I just can't let that go by.
Okay.
I heard the comment that we have accommodated the neighbors there in Harrison Ranch, and all those children are going to be able to go to Barbara Harvey. What does that do with respect to the other schools that some of these children have been zoned to? Do they now go to, do they have to travel further? I heard a lot of comments that were made about, what are we, what are we doing about that? How does that, how does this zone, this B, I thought Mr. Sauer was supposed to be here tonight with his maps, and he was going to tell us whether there would be more children going further away to accommodate this. How does that work?
If you would like, I can bring Mr. Sauer.
No, no, I wouldn't.
Yes, sir.
It's just, you know, we, we have these things on the agenda, and for some reason or another, it's, it's, it's just frustrating, that's all. So, it's too late. I voted without being heard.
Well, Mr. Sauer, could you come down and respond to any concerns that Board Member Golden might have, you know, concerning this issue?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
I want to know, what is the impact on the number of minority students that are already zoned to go to one school that will take place?
We, we did not do it by race, it was non-race factors, so that wasn't played or put into the system. I can definitely get you those numbers, but we, we do it on socioeconomic as well as ESC gifted and, and non-gifted students, LEP students, but we do not do it on, on the race factor. So, I, I, we don't have that right now.
Okay, I hear you.
Okay.
We'll talk a little later on about.
Absolutely.
Another school rezoning that's going to come up.
Yep, okay. Any other questions?
No, not on this school.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sauer, for coming down. Next item on the business is approval of minutes. The superintendent have some recommendation?
Yes, sir, I recommend the approval of minutes from November 13th, School Board Workshop and Meeting, November 20th, Reorganization Meeting, and December 4th, 2018 Workshop.
Is there a motion to?
So moved.
It's been approved by Board Member Kennedy.
I'll second.
It's seconded by Vice Chairman Messenger. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr., okay, Board recognizes Mr. Kennedy.
Thanks, sir. This is just a computer point of order, this'll, this'll just be a voice vote, because we, the computer tripped us, unless you can reset it, Michelle? Because it's showing me that the motion failed.
Just take a voice one, that's fine.
Yeah, we, we, okay. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. It's approved unanimously, five zero, okay. Next item of business is the consent agenda.
Mr. Minor.
Yes, sir.
I think this is for a motion, I need to check with a clerk. There is an item on the consent agenda that needed to be moved to new business items removed from the consent agenda, because I have a conflict, and I think it is now item number Approval of the new agreement between the School Board of Manatee County and Consulate Healthcare LLC for clinical experience for Manatee Technical College, practical nursing and nursing assistant students for the 2018 through 2021 year. I need, I'll make a motion to remove that from the consent agenda, and it needs to be placed on new business items removed from the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it was number 14 that Board Member, you know, Hope asked to be removed from the regular consent agenda and to put under new business items pulled from consent, it would be number two, I believe, in the items pulled from the consent agenda. It's been seconded by Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion necessary? If not, the board, the chair calls the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. It passes unanimously. It is now 14 has been removed from the consent agenda, and I, why don't we go through it again? There has been a, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of number 14 from it?
So moved.
Moved by, okay. Moved by Board Member Hope, seconded by.
Do you need a recommendation?
Okay, I thought she had already recommended, but I'm wrong.
Yeah, that, yeah, I think because of the retraction, but I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for December 11th, 2018.
As amended.
As amended with that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Okay, is there any discussion? The chair hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, indicate by nay. This, it passes unanimously. Okay, under old business, there is, there's a motion, we need a motion to remove approval of professional development, reading and math programs, and we need to take it from the table, if I understand correctly.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move the revised item on the motion to remove approval of professional development, reading and math program. SDMC number 19 dash 022 dash SM for an additional $65,000, not to exceed $755,165.50 for us to take it up again. Thank you.
Okay, now, do, do we need superintendent approval?
Yes, sir, I will recommend approval of professional development, reading and math.
Wait, 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 wait. It needs a second. My motion removed from the table.
Okay, we're going to second it before we go to the recommendation. Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Board Member Golden, and the superintendent.
All in favor of removing it from the table?
Okay, we got to do that before, we don't have to have a recommendation for removing it from the table. Thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor of removing this from the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, it's removed from the table, and superintendent, you have a recommendation regarding this item?
Yes, sir, I recommend the approval of professional development, reading and math program for additional $65,000, not to exceed $755,165.50 revised.
Okay, it's been moved, or it's been approved, recommended by the superintendent. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Board Member Kennedy, and it's seconded by Board Member Golden. Is there discussion? Board, the chair not hearing discussion, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. It passes unanimously, five zero. Okay, now we get, next item is in old business is approval of professional development reading. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation regarding item number two in old business?
I believe the recommendation on this one is for the approval of renewal use of National IPA Proposal for Alternative.
I think we're on the one above, Approval of Professional Development. I guess that's okay, we're all done.
We are.
Okay, well said. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
New business.
National IPA Proposal for Alternative Student Transportation, SDMC number 15 dash 0061 dash MR, not. not to exceed five hundred thousand.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the Superintendent. Is there a motion to approve that recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Vice Chairman Messenger to approve, uh, the Superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, it's seconded by, uh, Board Member Golden. Uh, is there discussion?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Okay, the, the, the chair recognizes, you know, Board Member, uh, Hopes.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I had asked that this item be removed. Um, there, there were some issues in the past, which I think have been addressed. But is there a representative from American Logistics Company? I would, I would like the representative from the company to come up for a, a question, Mister Chair, if I may?
Sure.
If you could state your name and, uh, position for the record, please.
My name's Nick Noble. I work with, I'm Senior Account Coordinator at American Logistics Company.
Okay, thank, thank you for being here. Um, we, i- in the past, we had some issues, um, with this contract. First of all, this is a large company. Uh, it provides logistic services and, and acts as our agent to arrange with local companies to provide transportation for our, uh, students with exceptional needs. In the past, this contract, uh, your, your company had a, a, a firm or a subcontractor in South Florida that was managing it. Uh, I know, uh, your company met with the, the Superintendent, and I believe also the new Superintendent. And it's my understanding that we, we now have a, a, a representative in the Tampa Bay region. Uh, would that be yourself?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. So, uh, Mister Chairman, I just want a commitment for the record that in continuing this service, that they will have a local Tampa Bay representative that is available to us in the event issues arise or, or we need to address, uh, some of these transportation needs.
Yes, sir. That's, that's myself, yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Whoa, my, I'm sorry, order of the day? No, the order of the day. Okay.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Okay. Are you satisfied?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, uh, the board's going to call the question. All those in favor of this item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Uh, all, it's, uh, five oh in, in favor of that. The next item is, um, uh, new, under new business, approval of the bid on painting services. Um, does the Superintendent have a recommendation? Yeah.
Mister Minor, before you move on to that one, we do need to take up, um, the, uh, consulate healthcare that was pulled from the consent agenda just a few minutes ago. It, it will not be on your agenda.
Okay, that, yeah, that, that's another pull from consent.
The number fourteen.
Yeah, I apologize for that. Okay, this is, um, Mister Hopes asked that number fourteen be pulled. Does the Superintendent have a recommendation regarding, uh, what was in night, number fourteen of the consent agenda? Uh, approval of the new agreement between the School Board and Consulate Healthcare. I think that's the matter we're talking about, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I recommend the approval of the new agreement between the School Board of Manatee County and Consulate Healthcare LLC for clinical experience for Manatee Technical College, practical nursing and nursing assistant students for the 2018 through 2021 school years. There's no financial impact.
Okay, it's been recommended by the Superintendent. I understand that, uh, Board Member Hopes, uh, believes he has a conflict and wishes to declare a conflict on this matter and will not be voting. Is that correct, sir?
Correct, and then I, I guess I'm assuming, once the motion's made, then I'll read this statement that I'm required by law to read.
Okay, is there, uh, a motion to approve, you know, this item recommended by the Superintendent?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved in, uh, by Board, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Messenger and seconded by, uh, Board Member Kennedy. And now is appropriate time for that statement.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, members, I have filed the Form eight B, which is a memorandum of voting conflict for county municipal and other local public officials. And, uh, the statement I'll read for the record is that I, Dr. Hopes, has an ongoing business relationship with Consulate Healthcare Corporation, its predecessor companies, and its progeny that dates from approximately two thousand and ten. This relationship has included professional technical consulting about health services facilities, technology, informatics, and data use pair relationships, and includes work as a paid lobbyist. Uh, he has disclosed his relationship with Consulate to the Florida Commission on Ethics in connection with his work as a lobbyist, and has consistently reported it on Form one or Form six, Statement of Financial Interest since appointed. Uh, he, I have, uh, an ongoing compensated consulting relationship with Consulate. I perform these consulting services through healthcare management decisions. Care centers operated by Consulate in Florida, Virginia, and Pennsylvania utilize healthcare information technology systems that are distributed by Clinilink Incorporated, an international company which I, Dr. Hopes, chair. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Board Member Hopes. Uh, is there any further discussion or comments regarding this item?
I have an unreadiness.
Okay.
If I can.
Okay, uh, the, the board recognizes, uh, Board Member Golden?
Yes. Mister Superintendent.
Yes, sir.
Would you please share with me this is, this new agreement for clinical experience for Manatee Technical College? How, I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why Dr. Hopes has a conflict. I know he has a financial interest in the company. But does that financial interest translate in any way directly to these students who are going to be governed by this agreement between us and this company?
I'm going to turn it over to Mister Wagner, who was involved in working on the contract to, uh, get the support in this program going. So Mister Wagner, would you please?
Absolutely. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so this is a standard, uh, clinical agreement that we have with our program. So, practical nursing, uh, the students have to have a percent of their time out in doing clinicals. So they actually have to work in hospitals, uh, care facilities. And the challenge we have, it's not just us, everybody has it across the state. There's a lot of students and very few places for them to work, or for them to have clinical agreements with. And so, uh, this is a, a new organization for us, um, that we're going to put in for MTC, and allows our students a place to go to apply what they're learning inside of the, the practical nursing program.
How many students would this apply to?
It depends on the rotations of the students that go through there. It could be six or seven. They, it could be six or seven, it could be twelve or thirteen. Uh, it just depends on the student's time, where they are in the program, what's open, is it day, is it night, is it weekend? Uh, and with clinicals here in the state of Florida, we have to have a teacher supervise the students also. So they just don't go by themselves. They have to be supervised, uh, by one of our faculty, so.
So a vote against this would impact seven to thirteen kids who are trying to become nurses because they wouldn't be able to go to this facility.
Correct, and we are actually, we need, we need facilities. We need more. If there's anybody watching this, and you can take our nurses to this.
Because Doctor Hopes has a financial interest in this company. That's like, you don't have a financial interest.
No, no, not the comp, company. Maybe I need to clarify it, okay? First of all, this company is the largest provider of post-acute and skilled nursing in Florida with over thirteen thousand beds, eighteen facilities in this region. And, uh, my relationship, the reason why I have to report it is because some of these facilities purchased years ago technology that my company provided. And the, the parent company, I have been in the past and still am their registered lobbyist before the legislature and in, in, in DC at times. So it's, it, I have to record that. I mean, the, the, the relationship could be if a student used that technology and said, wow, this is great technology, and went to work for some other company after they graduate. Somehow indirectly, I could benefit from that student using that technology. Uh, or likewise, uh, I could suffer a loss if they didn't like the technology and they went to another company. But, uh, it's kind of hard to, to be in this space where I would not have a conflict because the company is so large, uh, that they're in every health district in the state of Florida.
Let me be clear, I'm not concerned with his conflict. I'm concerned with my vote. And my vote is to always try to support children who are trying to do better. But not in any way to, to, to be supportive of the financial or pecuniary interest of any one of us. So let me be very clear about that. And that's why I asked the question that I did ask. Does this benefit him directly in a pecuniary way? I didn't hear the answer.
No, no. And, and just for the record, we don't pay for our clinical sites. There are some that have to pay. We don't, we can't part, we can't pay. We don't charge students for them to do clinicals. They pay tuition that the governor sets, but we are not paying any organizations, so our students can go and learn.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Any, any other board, uh, comments or questions? Uh, hearing none, the, the chair calls the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed say nay. It pass, and it, it passes four zero with one abstention. Okay. The... Okay. I'm sorry, we're, um...
Mister Chair, we're on, um, new business, not consent.
I guess. Okay. Okay, um, you know, forgive me. Thank you, Mister Kennedy. Uh, the next item, uh, is approval of the bid painting services not to exceed three million dollars. Is there a recommendation by the Superintendent?
Yes, sir. I recommend the approval of the bid on painting services, SDMC number nineteen dash zero zero six one dash MR not to exceed three million dollars.
A second.
It's been moved in, uh, by Mister, uh, Board Member Kennedy, uh, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there any discussion? The board not hearing any, we'll call the question. All those in favor of this item recommended by the Superintendent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye, all the opposed indicate nay. The matter passes five zero unanimously. The next item is the approval of, of budget amendments for, uh, uh, September twenty eighteen. Is there a recommendation from the Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of budget amendments for September twenty eighteen.
A second.
Okay, uh, it's been moved by Board Member Kennedy and seconded by Board Member Golden. There was a tie, I think.
I, I hit the second button, so.
Is there any discussion? The chair hearing, uh, okay, the chair recognizes a Board Member, uh, Nothing, you're right, we're used to indicating you wanted to.
Yeah, and Mister Kennedy did too, so I didn't know who we were.
We'll go.
Ladies first. No, I just wanted to, um, thank, um, everyone that's worked so hard to, you know, get us back on track with the financial statements and the budget amendments. And I, and then, uh, we did get, I, I think we all got an email this week about, uh, the length of the budget amendments now. And, and I, and I think last meeting, I, I, I like all the additional detail and all the additional, I think somebody counted it, just as page numbers, and I, and it is page numbers, but I like all the additional detail. And I just wanted to say thank you for that, and I, I know that's been a lot of work, and it's been, uh, arduous, and I appreciate it all. That's all.
Mister Kennedy is recognized for comments?
I just wanted to say exactly the same thing. Thank, thank you to the Superintendent and our CFO and our staff. Now that, uh, we have kind of switched over with the RP, I appreciate the new level of detail in the board.
Any other board comments or questions? The chair hearing none. We'll call the question. All those in favor of this item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Uh, there are no votes nay. It passes five zero unanimously. The next item on the agenda is approval of year-to-date financial statement through September thirty, twenty eighteen. Is there a recommendation, uh, from the Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the year-to-date financial statements through September twenty eighteen.
So moved. Second.
It's, uh, been moved by, uh, Board Member Kennedy. It's seconded by Board Member Golden. Is there any discussion? The chair hearing none, you'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. This matter, um, is approved unanimously, five zero. Uh, next is, uh, the item is concerns approval of budget amendments for October, uh, twenty eighteen. Uh, is there a recommendation from the Superintendent?
Yes, I recommend the approval of budget amendments for October twenty eighteen.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been, uh, moved for approval by, you know, Board Member Kennedy, uh, seconded by, uh, Board Member Golden. Is there any discussion? The chair hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. This matter, uh, is approved unanimously, now five zero. The, uh, next item is, uh, for consideration is approval of the year-to-date financial statements through October thirty-one, twenty eighteen. Does the Superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the year-to-date financial statements through October twenty eighteen.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, it's, uh, been moved by, uh, Board Member Golden. Is it second, there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
It's seconded by, uh, Vice Chair Messenger. All those in favor, uh, okay, uh, is there any discussion? The chair hearing none, uh, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. It, uh, pays, passes unanimously, uh, five zero. Next, um, is the approval of, of the Board Member Committee assignments for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. This is, this is a board item. There's no recommendation from the Superintendent required. We all have that in there, uh, in our, um, agenda packages. Uh, do I have a motion to approve, uh, as presented?
Is that moved?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Kennedy and seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Uh, is there any discussion? The chair hearing nine, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, indicate by, uh, indicating nay, and this passes unanimously, and, um, this, okay, this gets us down to an item called Consideration of Superintendent Contractual Agreement. This is, uh, we just, this is the agreement, the proposal, uh, that we discussed in, um, you know, this afternoon in workshop to, um, regarding, you know, our, our Superintendent. And, um, uh, this is, um, a board item. It does not require a recommendation, you know, for the Superintendent. It's been reviewed, and it's probably on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the proposed contract with Superintendent Saunders?
Mister Chairman, I move the approval of the Superintendent's employment contract dated December eleventh, twenty eighteen between the School Board of Manatee County and Cynthia Saunders.
It's been moved by Mister Hope, you know, to approve, uh, this contract. Is there a second to the motion by Mister Hope? The, the chair will second that motion. And is there discussion?
There's public comment.
Okay, we have public comment. Okay.
Uh, first is, um, Pat Barber, and you have five minutes. And after Pat Barber is James Horner. Finally. finally.
My name's Pat Barber, I'm the president of the Manatee Education Association, and as you know, we represent the teachers and paraprofessionals here in Manatee County. I don't think I'll need five minutes, I spoke to you last Tuesday about this issue. There's, there have been a lot of comments tonight about what promises have been made about doing a national search. Those comments by school board members were made at the time that you were appointing an interim. There have been a lot of things that have become known since that time, including the performance of the current interim. I am, I'm in a unique position in working with the superintendent, and have worked with twelve superintendents and interims in my tenure as president of the Manatee Education Association, and I do want to say that in working, I worked with Superintendent Saunders as a deputy, as first as executive director of high schools, then as the deputy superintendent, and now as the superintendent. And I think that her position as deputy superintendent was very different than it is as superintendent. Her role was to support the decisions of the superintendent, and now those decisions are hers. I believe that she has begun to earn the trust of employees, she has rolled up her sleeves and done a yeoman's job in attacking the problems of the ERP, identifying what those problems were, setting timelines, and making sure those timelines were met. We have three contracts that are still being negotiated, we have key positions that have not been filled, and that cannot be filled until we have somebody permanently in that job. If we do not move forward with the competent person that we currently have in that position, then moving forward in our district is not possible. We will remain in limbo while we try to continue to solve the problems of the ERP, continue to have those vacancies because someone is not going to come until we know who the superintendent is, continue to work towards resolution of three contracts, and try to open three schools in the fall. So I would urge you to remember that you have a unique perspective on where we are now. You five are the only ones who enter into this contract, she's one of three that you hire, whoever that person will be, and you have a unique perspective of the district, of the position, and of the superintendent's performance. So I would urge you to move forward and help the district move forward by giving our current interim superintendent a contract so that we can move forward and continue to make the progress that we've made under her leadership as an interim. Thank you.
Board discussion.
No, we have one more.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Chair, Board, Superintendent Saunders, staff. It's again my pleasure to come before you and once again show my support for Superintendent Saunders, my full competence in the job that she is doing. It would seem to me logical that why would we waste, why would we use precious time, resources, and money to look for a solid superintendent when we have a solid superintendent sitting right here? As far as cutting her teeth, you might want to check with the CEO of Typher and see if those teeth have been sharpened, and I think that, I think that she is the one who can continue to lead us without pause, and I hope that you will unanimously support her as there are many obstacles, and this is a very tough job, she needs every one of you for her support, we saw that today with what we read, we heard that tonight, we need you to support her to do her job that she's been doing, and much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, Ms. Harvey.
Ms. Harvey, if you'd like, we'll ask that policeman to pick you up and bring you down here, just tell us what you want.
I know it should get the other knee, so refuse.
Wait till your school opens first.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Minor, board members, Superintendent Saunders, and Assistant there, Mr. Wagner, everyone. As you know, I bring to the podium quite a few years in Manatee County, and I bring also to the podium forty-nine thousand children. I bring the experience of Manatee County community that I work with even now, although they say that I've retired. And I bring to you the importance of stability. As you know, I have gone through a national search, in fact, two, and we have never found anyone nationally who could bounce into Florida data and understand it. We have made down through the years multiple mistakes as we tried to get someone from the outside who did not know Manatee County, who did not know Florida statues, who, who really tried, they interviewed quite well, they were kind of handsome, one, two of them, but the bottom line was, they could not bring us forward. We are now at a point that we have someone who is here and who can continue to move us forward. Now, looking at personalities and political kinds of stuff, you know, I don't get into that. My concern is for Manatee County students, and yes, I've done some things with the state, but my major concern are these children. And the concern that I am really thinking of now is, how can we make sure that although we're on an upward trajectory now, that we keep going that way? We don't, you see, every time we go down, we get somebody new, we have to get them, they don't know Palmetto like we know or she knows Palmetto because she has been there. They don't know Somerset or other places, and the children who are unique and what they bring to school, see, some of our children bring the homeless situations, well, if you've been in some of the larger cities, you don't know what a homeless child sleeping on a bridge is. She knows, she's been there, she's been to multiple programs. Not only that, she brings the heart of Manatee County. I have a few other things to say, but I'll call you personally.
Thank you. I believe that concludes public comment.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, board discussion, Mr. Hope, you made the motion, you have the privilege of going first in discussion, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to address a couple of things. One is, I realize that the public is aware of an administrative complaint that came out Thursday or Friday, interesting timing. I will tell you their problems with the complaint. I spoke with the Chief of Staff for the Commissioner of Education, and she got Bonnie Wilmot, one of the attorneys at the Department of Education, on the phone with me, and, and we discussed it, and Mrs. Saunders was not the deputy superintendent at the time of the issue at hand, she was the executive director of secondary education. She was not in a position of setting policy or making policy, she was in a position of following the policies and the directions of, actually at the time, her longtime friend and mentor. And that was who was in control. And any admissions that she may have made during the course of that investigation were, I believe, based on a lack of proper legal advice and a manifest misunderstanding of the law, as well as misplaced loyalty, not realizing that she may have been taking responsibility for something she did not do. All this was initiated and investigated, I believe, prior to my tenure on the board. I have, however, had significant experience with governing boards overseeing other state agencies and professions, including the Board of Medicine, Nursing, Optometry, and directly and indirectly the Florida Bar. From what I have learned, this entire matter likely should have been addressed at the inception of the pre-probable cause investigation, and likely could have resulted in no action by the state. Given the language in the administrative complaint and what I understand to be the facts, two things appear to be the case. In normal times, we may not have moved forward with a permanent contractual agreement with Mrs. Saunders until the matters in the administrative complaint are fully resolved. While there does not appear to have been any effort to defend the allegations against Ms. Saunders prior to the findings of probable cause, that does not mean that Ms. Saunders is guilty of the allegations. From what I understand to be the facts in the matter, Ms. Saunders was not and could not have been responsible for the importation from another district nor the implementation here of the policy. I question, nor of authorizing or performing any administrative actions associating with the coding of withdrawing students. While Ms. Saunders was likely interviewed by investigators, she may have sought to protect her supervisor by suggestion that only in her certificate should be the subject to be sanctioned, not the deputy superintendent at the time. As such, her interest as an employee of the school district and our interest as board members of the education system and responsible employers of all employees of this district compel us to assist Mrs. Saunders in addressing each and every allegation of rule violation contained in the complaint, and to correct any misperceptions, inaccuracies, and factual errors that may exist, unless we, as a body, do now already believe and based on incontrovertible facts that the allegations against Ms. Saunders are true and well-founded, and I don't think we do. Therefore, we need to be pragmatic and move to secure the superintendent's position to stabilize the district until such time in the future where we can be in a position to conduct a national search. We all are aware of the challenges we have before us, this is about the forty-nine thousand five hundred children a day whose futures depend on the actions of this district and the education we deliver in the classroom. And for nearly five years, Mrs. Saunders has led the dramatic improvement in that instruction and has brought us to this place. I believe, as I have mentioned before, that this is about moving the district forward. While I too have been pronounced in doing a national search, as we have heard from the experts, we are not in a position to even entertain a national search, and likely, the likelihood of us bringing in someone that has the knowledge of our system and is able to implement these policies set forth for this board to bring the district forward is highly unlikely, and I request your approval of this motion, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Hope. Other board members? The chair recognizes Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you, Ms. Minor. I am not going to reiterate what I said at the workshop, I'll stand by what I said then, but I do want to make clear one thing, I do want to repeat one thing, that any employee from the superintendent to a part-time transportation aide, anytime an accusation is made, there is a presumption of innocence. And to Dr. Hope's point, I have no doubt that this will come back as unfounded. We have heard a lot tonight during public comment, we've heard a lot during the past week. I have told superintendent myself that I have been impressed with the past six months. I told her this yesterday, that she has moved people to her side that I thought would never be moved to her side, and I, and I hope that for the long term, that you can be our superintendent. And this is my big however, is that I believe we should wait until this complaint is settled, or at least give the community time to digest this. This just came up mid-morning, late morning, and I just don't see the harm in tabling this. I mean, I'm saying this hoping you're not walking out the door tomorrow morning if we do table this, but, but I don't expect you to do that either, so maybe I'm, anyway. Again, I don't want to repeat what I said at the workshop because I stand by that, but this is an incredibly unique situation that I think this board needs to handle with care and support, the superintendent. In this, that may sound two-faced or facetious to say, we want to support you, but I'm not supporting this contract at this moment only because of the circumstances that we find ourselves in now. So that's, that's kind of my, again, as I said at the workshop last week, I'm trying to kind of walk both sides of this line, because I have been moved by the people I've talked to within the district who have said, you know, I have worked for her, she has, she is, she is a different superintendent than she was a deputy superintendent, which makes a lot of sense because it's a completely different job. She has been a very effective leader, I don't need to repeat all the things we heard tonight and that the five of us have heard over the past week and beyond. And as I said, I, my position on this has evolved, we, I've personally gone from national search to my idea at the workshop last week, I've since, I believe that, to Reverend Golden's point at the workshop last week, I was moving toward, let's, or I have moved toward, let's still do a search, but let's allow Superintendent Saunders to be part of that search, and I think she would automatically become the front-runner, but I do think that we have to honor, there's a price to be paid if we, if we very suddenly change our path, and I know my thoughts are a little bit disjointed here, so I apologize, but, but for that reason, I'd like to make a motion that we table this, so not only the board members can consider this further, but the community has a chance to calm down and have a little bit more reasoned and rational debate about how we go forward, because there are clear and obvious proven successes that the superintendent has demonstrated, we would be foolish to ignore those, but we have a unique situation here that I think that we need to, we need to let play out, and we need to let the superintendent defend herself, and I believe she will be successful in doing that, and then we can come back and pick this up again.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment on the motion, please?
Yes, sir.
I believe the proper motion is a motion postponed rather than tabled, tabled is just for temporary.
Right, right.
And you can postpone an item indefinitely, which basically kills it, or you can postpone it to a date certain, a time certain, or until completion of an event, but it needs some kind of a endpoint before it comes back.
I'll withdraw my second. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll withdraw my motion. Okay, I'll, Mr. Chair, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, the motion been withdrawn. Other board member comments?
Yes, sir.
The chair recognizes Board Member Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier this evening, one of the persons making public comment said, "Don't choose the easy wrong over the hard right in terms of this decision." When I was a candidate for this office, though I have been accused of asking for a national search, that's not true, what I said was I wanted a candidate outside of the current school system because someone plucked from within the school system would be subject to those people who they had been working with. And I held to that until, until I got here. And I'm sure I'm not the first politician that has made a promise that he finds it more difficult to keep than to change, than to change his mind. But I'm not at a point, for all the reasons that have come up, to where I want to sit here tonight and want to execute a contract with anybody. See, that's the other thing. I can't, nobody, not Mrs. Sanders, not anybody. For this reason and this reason alone, we have not involved the parents of those 49,500 children that you're talking about. As much as we sit up here and say we care and as much as we are concerned, I don't think that you're more concerned about my grandchildren than I am. And so, rather than be sorry, I want to be safe. And this is nothing new between myself and Mrs. Sanders now. Because of the sunshine law, I now get a chance to say to you what we have talked about and why I'm even more strongly convinced that this is the right path. She has said, as is written in this contract that is proposed, that it become effective on March 1. As far as she's concerned, that's a good enough date for her to be patient with us and for us to be as thorough as we need to be. And so what I'm proposing, what I would like to see is a postponement to a definite time, that we postpone our consideration of this contract until the second meeting in February. And that between now and the second meeting in February, anybody that has any reason beyond what we've already heard, and let's not insult each other by continuing to bring up things that have just been brought up so many times, but there's something beyond what we've already heard, or if there's somebody better, not because you think so, but because by fact, by experience, by deed, let them come forth and let us deal with that in February so that we don't keep this lady dangling and so that we will let the people know, "We've heard you. We have heard from the people that you recommended, and you've changed our minds." And I need to be quite honest because that's, I'm just going to, you're going to have to change my mind, not just because this lady has done a good job pulling our fat out the fire. But I heard some of her colleagues come here tonight and say, "The only time in the last 18 years that this school system has been stable has been the time that we brought Superintendent Green in and she had the sense enough to bring in Saunders." So we've improved with our curriculum. We've improved with our instruction. Now, everybody can't be lying. I just don't believe everybody could be lying about this lady. But I also don't believe that everybody has had an opportunity to have input about her. And she agrees with that. And so my, my motion, since there isn't one on the table, is that we postpone consideration of this contract until our second meeting in February and that those conditions that are set forth, that she's agreed to for postponement, are complied with, that the public have a chance to have input.
I'm trying to figure out where we are legally. Mr. Hope has made a motion, you know, to approve the proposed, you know, contract. It has been seconded. That, that is the discussion. You know, during the course of this, I understood that Board Member Golden has made a motion to postpone.
Before that, there was a motion to table and seconded. And the second was drawn and the table was drawn.
Right.
But I believe that the second to Mr. Hope's motion has not made any decisions about that. So my motion is out of order.
I think Mr. Meyer seconded that.
Yes. So where we are is whether you're going to withdraw, you're seconding his motion or allowing my motion to stand.
No, that's, that's not the proper order.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Don.
Yep. Dr. Hope's motion to approve was on, was a matter of discussion. Reverend Golden moved to postpone the decision on that motion to the second meeting in February. That's been seconded, and now that's the live issue before the board.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'd ask to speak on that.
Okay. Mr. Hope's motion that was seconded by me is superseded for discussion purposes at the moment by the motion made by Board Member Golden that has been seconded by, I believe, Board Member Kennedy. Do I have that right? Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes.
If Reverend Golden's motion is approved by majority, that means this issue is postponed until February 26. If Reverend Golden's motion is not approved, then Dr. Hope's motion becomes the motion before the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Don. Okay. We're at a point of discussion regarding Mr. Golden's, you know, motion. And I understand that Board Member Hope would like to address that at this time. Now, we, okay, we're, we're in a five minutes for a whole new motion here. Okay, thank you. The board, the chair recognized, recognizes Board Member, you know, Hope to address that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, the, the agreement that is before us is well-thought-out. It has terms that don't become effective until March. It has a 90-day termination clause without, termination provision without cause, meaning for whatever reason this board can move to terminate the agreement in a 90-day period of time. We are at a very critical juncture. We are at a tipping point. We have much work to do, beginning this month, with regards to the budgeting process, the allocations. I have, I have given up nearly every aspect of my life for the past year during my term as chair to get to understand this organization. I studied this organization, organization before I was appointed. I began discussing with many leaders around the state, plans should we have a superintendent that resigns. We still have many vacancies. We truly need to move on with this. We are not doing anything permanent. This agreement has adequate provisions should we decide at any point to terminate this agreement and move in a different direction. We have heard from district leadership. We have heard from staff. We have heard from teachers that they are comfortable with the direction that we are currently going. It is important that we view this from an organizational perspective, a, an organizational stabilization perspective, to continue to make progress moving this district forward. You have probably gotten to know my style. I have a history of success in a, a disruptive type of, of, of governance and leadership to get an organization to a point where they are, but where, where they are ready to move forward with change. And I will tell you, I have a pretty good barometer reading on how much this organization can tolerate, and we were at that limit. The stabilizing force is the team that has come together, including Mr. Wagner and, and others, to move this district forward. Please do not underestimate the complexities of what is in front of us. We are going to be opening three new schools. They are not staffed. Actually, we haven't even completed naming the principals for all the schools that are going to be in place for August. It doesn't include the recruitment of more than 300 professionals that we don't have in the district that we need by August. We can pursue these other aspirations and iterations, but having the security of at least having a superintendent under contract who we know, who we have observed her abilities, and I am concerned that to fulfill either a campaign promise or a commitment made outside of this organization, that we are going to put this district at risk. It is important in organizations like this, whether it's through mergers, divestitures, or takeovers, that you understand what it takes to stabilize an administration. Without that administration, we're a bunch of board members that are going to be putting out a lot of fires. And this is merely an insurance policy for us that Cynthia Saunders is willing to agree to that only gives her 90 days' security. That's all this agreement does. But it sends a message and makes a statement that we are going to continue to work through with you throughout the rest of this process, continuously moving forward to our goals of ensuring academic success and opening these new schools and getting them staffed. I urge you to look at this as an insurance policy. While we go through whatever other debates, I urge you to vote down the motion for postponement. It is going to put the organization at great risk. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Board Member Hope. Is there any other board member would like to comment on Board Member Golden's motion that was seconded by Board Member Kennedy?
Is Board Member Golden accorded the privilege that was given to Mr. Hope when he made his motion and not to speak first?
You have, you have the floor, Board Member Golden. Go ahead.
I began by saying that everything that I'm suggesting I have discussed with the superintendent, it's not like she's not in the room. She's here. And I, I guess, I'm, 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 I'm more, I'm more of a believer that people shouldn't be frightened into the decisions that they have to make. Now, we also, you know, because this is the same board, other than myself, that six months ago, intently signed an agreement with this same lady, specifically and particularly excluding her from even being able to apply for this job. And now, all of a sudden, we're supposed to believe that we've had a change of heart and that if we don't do something tonight, that the whole system is going to fall apart. Now, either she is not the person that I think she is, that she's not going to be frightened, she's not going to change the way she works, she's not going to change the way she operates, she's not going to do anything differently between now and March the 1st, except give us an opportunity to hear from other people. I think that's a fearlessness that needs to be appreciated, that she cannot be intimidated by our weakness in the system. As a matter of fact, that's one of the reasons we want her to build this system up. And so I, I, I cannot state too strongly that we have an opportunity here to send a message that this board is not afraid of anything or anybody, and especially not its own superintendent, who might leave. Because if that's the kind of person she is, then we don't want her anyway. And so I'm, I'm just going to, you and I have talked. I asked you if March 1st was satisfactory with you. Now, if you plan on leaving before March the 1st, I can't, we can't stop that, no matter what she signs. But the question I believe is that we do have somebody here who wants to work with us, who wants to work with our children, and who will not be frightened or intimidated. Now, if I'm wrong about that, you need to tell me right now.
Okay. Any other board comments concerning Board Member, you know, Golden's motion? Board Member Vice Chair Messenger?
As we talked about in the workshop, there are things that I don't necessarily agree with in the contract. And it really had to do with incentive pay and, and truly also the length of the contract. However, I also think it's a mistake to postpone until February 26. But as it stands right now, I do not see how I would comfortably approve that contract because I believe that there should be incentives in that contract for the superintendent that is based on an evaluation tool that we create. And I think that that's a highly important thing because that's what our teachers have to go through. And I cannot see supporting a contract that does not have those same types of measures. Dr. Green's contract had similar measures. She was, had a district VAM. I don't necessarily agree with doing it that way again, but I believe that that's an important thing. You know, we talked last Tuesday about how we felt about moving forward. We didn't have a conversation necessarily about all of the terms that we want in this contract. And to me, that's an entirely separate conversation that I would like to have. And, you know, we got this great draft, and I think that that's an important thing. I just think we should talk about it and work on it and, and see what's amenable to Mrs. Saunders. I believe, I, I think I've had to say ditto several times to Mr. Kennedy, how he talks about, "We believe in supporting Mrs. Saunders this time." And I too have gotten a tremendous amount of folks that are supportive of Mrs. Saunders that may not have been supportive of our board decision six months ago, and they are now. And that's huge. That speaks volumes. And so, really, to kind of quote Mr. Golden, I think you said something along the lines of, "Someone's going to have to talk you out of it." And, and I understand that. I think I'm in that same place. And maybe that we go your avenue, or maybe we give the public comment. But I do think there should be more time. I think there should be time for the board to discuss what we think is an important thing, what we think is important in this contract. Because I looked at multiple contracts, and that was in a lot of state of Florida contracts for superintendents. And I think that's an important piece that we should be discussing. Just a, a point of data, because there's been some folks that make the argument, "Well, you know, I really think we're going to do a search and we're going to get something better," and, and, and all this other stuff that I keep hearing. I looked at five counties that were close, closest in size to us, and I looked at their superintendents and how they chose their superintendents and the credentials of their superintendents that they chose. And out of those five, and their- And out of those five, and their populations were similar to ours, ranging from 40,000 to 60,000 students, because that was the closest I could find, and these were appointed superintendents, not elected. Only one of those had previously been a superintendent. The other four of those superintendents out of the five had never been a superintendent before. So, the people that come before us and say, well, we need somebody that's been a superintendent before, that's not even the trend in Florida right now. And that's based on data. That is based on the research. And I'm a data person. I think, I've got a kindred spirit in the audience that's a data person. I'm a data person. That's how I thrive on that. And I think most teachers thrive on the data. That's how we guide our instruction. That's how I think we should guide our decisions. So, I'm a data person. So, to think that we'll do a search and we may get something, I'm just not convinced that that necessarily would happen, but there are things that I think need to be changed in this contract. I also do not think waiting until February 26th is a prudent decision. I would be willing to wait the beginning of January so that we have that conversation, we can put it on the workshop, we talk about the contract, we talk about other things that we think are important. You know, we had that conversation prior to hiring Mrs. Saunders as the interim, and I appreciated that conversation. I think that's an important conversation that we should have. And I think that the public deserves more input than has been given, because this did come up rather quickly. Hey, look, I did it.
Okay. We're talking about Mr. Golden's motion at this time. Mr. Di?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Reverend Golden indicated just as he had to walk down the hall that he would like to come back and, I think, make an additional discussion on his motion.
I'm prepared.
Okay. How do we stand for time, Michelle?
Two minutes and 27 seconds for Reverend Golden.
Okay.
Thank you.
The chair recognizes Board Member Golden for additional comments concerning his motion.
I think that the reality of where we are is trying to do two things at once without doing violence to the patience that the superintendent, the interim superintendent has shown us. Is it possible for me to, like you said, there can be a motion to postpone with specificity?
Yes, you could.
Okay. Can I amend it?
You could amend your motion to identify a new date?
Okay.
Or a new...
I do have a new date. And I'd like to amend my motion to have the contract considered on, at the second meeting in February, but I'd also like to have it presented for board discussion at the first workshop in February, which then gives us still a month to hear from anybody that has anything to say about it. It doesn't do any violence to the March date. It gives Mrs. Messenger the opportunity to review and have added the matters that she has raised here by the first workshop in the February calendar, which means that we would meet on February, I think it's the...
26.
No, that's the second. The first, the 12th. So, the workshop would be the 12th. We would have that discussion, and hopefully, that would be a contract that includes any of the other aspects that you're bringing up now about the, what you call incentive aspects. And it would still allow 30 days after Christmas for the people in this district to consider whether there's something that they can raise for us that would cause us to change our mind. I mean, we're not talking about a whole lot of time, and the superintendent has already said she doesn't have a problem with the contract being executed in March. Right now, what we're trying to do here is gather three votes to do something that will help. And that's my motion that we postpone, and I hope we can get three votes on that.
The chair does not understand Board Member Golden's instant motion. Could you restate it?
Yes, sir. Be glad to. My motion is that we postpone.
This is to amend your motion.
Okay. To amend my motion.
Correct.
But the original motion was that we postponed until February the 26th. The amendment is that we still postpone to February 26th, but not just to allow the public comment that I had discussed, but to also allow a workshop for the matters that Mrs. Messenger is bringing up now, that are not in the printed contract that's before us. And I agree with that. And she did bring that up in the workshop today. They're just not in there, and either we're going to move forward with the contract that exists without them being in there, or we're going to postpone.
Okay. I'm trying to...
Mr. Chairman, I don't think his motion to amend got a second, so I think it fails for lack of a second.
Okay, there's no second to the motion, to amend the motion. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, we're back on...
We're back on his original motion.
...Board Member Golden's motion to...
To postpone...
Mr. Chair.
...consideration of this proposed contract until February 26th. Is that it in a nutshell? Okay. Now, and that's what has been discussed, as I understand, you know...
Still discussing it.
...by Board Member Golden, it's been discussed by Board Member Kennedy, Board Member Messenger, and Board Member Hope, all for five minutes.
So, now, we're on the second round of discussion.
Well, I haven't spoken on this yet either. I'm going to start by asking a question of the superintendent. Is the proposal, the original proposal before the board that was moved by Member Hope and seconded by me, is that acceptable to the superintendent?
Yes, sir. I think the contract is fair, and I accept the contract as it's stated and presented to the board.
My next question is also directed to the superintendent. There has been mentioned having a national search, or, you know, some search that would include you. Would you be a member, would you agree to be a member of that search?
No, sir, I will not.
So, basically, if there's a national search, you're gone.
If the board chooses to go in that direction, I will not participate in that.
Okay, well, thank you. Now, Board Member, Vice Chair Messenger has indicated that she felt that the proposal was deficient in not including an incentive, you know, paragraph concerning compensation, if I understood Board Member Messenger correctly. I'm going to pose that to Board Member Messenger. Is that correct?
I don't know what else to call it, but yes, some sort of monetary incentive tied to an evaluation.
Okay. Now, I'm going to ask Board Member Messenger, would you approve the proposed contract that Superintendent Saunders said was acceptable to her if this board approved it, if it contained, you know, a paragraph with those incentives, like there was in Dr. Green's contract?
I don't recall exactly what Dr. Green's contract said, and I did not agree with how Dr. Green's evaluations were done, so no, I would not agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may make a comment on what you're mentioning? If, members, if you will recall, the agreement that had been negotiated with Mrs. Saunders originally to serve, it, in fact, had a performance condition in it that allocated a percent amount, and it had language that the board would separately each year identify the metrics and the performance criteria. My suggestion is that that was a paragraph that was already negotiated with Mrs. Saunders and her attorney and our board attorney. When we moved to make it an interim agreement, we pulled that out. I believe that would satisfy, it was patterned after other agreements in the state, and also from university presidents. So, I believe that language is still out there that we could incorporate into the agreement and move the 10% annuity amount into a performance bonus, in essence, for performance.
I think your question was, would that be enough to satisfy me? And the answer would still be no, just because this contract is for three and a half years, and I would support perhaps one or two years, but I would not support three and a half years at this point. And I'm not saying that later on down the line, when we hit, and I do really appreciate the provision that six months prior to, we had that conversation, because I have no problem with, in that timeframe, having that conversation, and then perhaps adding the extra year, adding the extra year and a half, the extra two years, I would be fine with that. But for right now, my comfortability level is for one or two years, and that's just how I, that is, if you're asking my opinion, that is what I would be far more comfortable
Would, so, if Superintendent Saunders were agreeable to substituting, you know, for basically two and a half years for the three and a half years in the current proposal, would that be also acceptable to you?
Are you looking to get this vote tonight? Is that your ultimate goal? Or, because I believe that with all these changes, that once again, the public should be involved.
Well, I...
And not necessarily saying until February 26th, I don't agree with that, but I do believe that the public should be involved.
Well, nobody doubts, nobody questions public involvement in being now, being informed about this, but it's also for the public to be informed about how you view things and how I view things.
Sure.
And so, I'm trying to elicit your view, and trying to move the ball, you know, down the court in terms of addressing a critical question, you know, facing this community and this district. Now, the, so, the question I posed to you, and this is addressing a statement that you said earlier, well, there should have been, you know, discussion. Well, we're having that discussion right now. And the advantage of, you know, the, basically, three and a half years is stability. It's stability for the superintendent, it's stability, you know, for the community, that they can expect them to be there. The longer it is, the more stable. Now, when you start reducing it, it becomes less stable to the community. Those are the trade-offs. And what you're telling us tonight is, well, you'd rather have a less stable contract at the expense of more flexibility.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I don't think that's an accurate statement at all. I 100% believe in stability, and that is my focus. And for me, I believe that if we want to go on a positive path, we need some flexibility somewhere down the line, and that's my aim. I believe that Mrs. Saunders, in this role, has, I can't think of a better word other than, I can't think of a better, other than changed, in a very positive way. And, and, all I'm asking for is to continue to ensure that that change is happening, and that, to me, might require a shorter contract in the beginning. I'm not saying that in a year or two years, we might want a longer contract, but I feel right now, what is more important is the stability, and the stability, I think, right now, needs to have a shorter contract, because I think a three and a half-year contract is not necessarily the wiser decision for us.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Mr. Hope.
I think, I think what...
We have a protocol that we agreed to implement with the training, and we are completely off the rails with that protocol. And I don't mean the five minutes, but I mean, every member is supposed to get a turn to speak before anybody else speaks again. And we are falling into this, like, well, I'm just going to interrupt so I can be heard, and I would appreciate it if the five of us would stick to the protocols, the four of us, because Reverend Golden was not there. But if we could, in an orderly fashion, take turns speaking, instead of just speaking up, hey, let me speak, let me speak, because I'm dying to say a couple of things, but I don't want to interrupt the person who's speaking, or I don't want to interrupt the chair, so I'm asking us as a board...
In all fairness to the chair, it's not showing up there.
Please interrupt me again, please.
It's not showing up there.
That's all I'm trying to say. Can I finish my sentence? Obviously, I can't, which is my point. Can we stop interrupting each other, interrupting the chair, and give each other turns to speak? Mr. Chair, it's your call. It's your meeting to run. I'm just respectfully asking that we go back to taking our turns, because this is, we're falling apart here.
Everybody, every member of this board had at least five minutes to speak before the chair spoke. It was my...
I have no problem with that, sir.
Okay, I appreciate your interruption right now. It was my hope, through, you know, asking, you know, a couple of questions, that there might be achieved some consensus of a workable proposal, you know, for continuing the services of Superintendent Saunders. Obviously, I have failed miserably. I find it very regrettable. There is a proposal that the superintendent found, you know, acceptable, no pretension that it was perfect, but considered by those who've seen a lot of contracts to be pretty darn good, with a lot of flexibility in the clauses in terms of termination, planning for the future, you know, six months ahead of time for transition. It intentionally did not include a paragraph regarding, you know, incentives, because those, like with, you know, teachers, has involved a lot of consternation, purposely, but it was purposely omitted in the draft. It wasn't an oversight. Adding it into the proposal, if that makes for a deal, fine, but I think a deal needs to be made. And we're not making a deal tonight, and I'm not sure we're ever going to have a deal. And I think it puts the district in jeopardy. I agree with Board Member Hope, and I'm trying to elicit... And I'm trying to elicit, you know, from my fellow board members, what terms they feel would be agreeable. And this was a complaint that I understood as I understood it from Vice Chair Messenger. Well, other board members didn't have input into these particular proposals. And this is a good time to have the input. And so I was trying to elicit input, what would make it work? And that's been interpreted as violating protocol, which I guess it is. And maybe the protocol doesn't apply here. So it doesn't seem like we're going to elicit, you know, terms that would be agreeable. And I think we're just going to have to call the question and go on with life as it is. The question right before us now-
Is it postponed?
Is the, the motion by Board Member Golden to postpone. Okay, Mr. Kennedy, do you wish to speak to-
I sure do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have had my request to speak button on for 15 minutes.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't even have it on here, so.
Okay. It's not showing up, Mr. Kennedy. That's fine. My point is still the same, that, Mr. Minor, my, my problem is not you eliciting how we get this done, I think that's, that's very proper to do. My point is, is stepping in front of each other, because the request to speak button is not working, that, that is what I am objecting to, especially since we have been over this and over this and over this. So I'm going to share a couple of observations, and then I am done until we vote. The, what is on the table right now, what we are discussing right now, is a motion to postpone until February 26th. So this, like, let's figure out the contract on the fly right now at 11 o'clock so we can approve it at 11:15, is not a good way to do business. That's my first observation. My second one is, is that Reverend Golden, I think, has opened a window, because Reverend Golden, if I'm hearing you right, you have said that if nothing else changes, you are a vote for this contract. If nothing else changes between now and February 26th, nothing else changes, or, excuse me, if nothing changes, you are a vote for this contract, which has affected March 1.
That's great.
Correct?
And, and to complete the thought, and I am not a vote for this contract if it is executed tonight.
So there is our answer.
Mr. Kennedy-
Please don't do it, please don't do it.
I'll wait till you finish.
Thanks very much. There, that's our solution. Reverend Golden is saying, if, if we support his motion to postpone until the 26th, he is a vote for this contract. That is stability. That enables, in my opinion, please don't laugh, Dr. Hope, it's embarrassing, as a board member, it's embarrassing.
That's all.
Please, and this is, whatever. So that gives, that gives Cindy stability, it gives her confidence, because I, I know for a fact that she is very confident that this DOE thing is meaningless and frivolous, and to your point, should have been dealt with two years ago, but for whatever reason it wasn't, and here it is back again. So I, I just don't, on Reverend Golden's motion to postpone to the 26th, and Reverend Golden, by the way, you, all you have to, when we get to workshop requests two hours from now, you, all you have to do is request a workshop. So that will, that will handle your desire to have a, a first meeting in February workshop on this issue. So I, I think, I think we have a solution in front of us, and we can, we can keep going around in circles, but, Mr. Chair, thank you.
This will take 30 seconds. Okay? Mr. Kennedy-
He recognizes Board Member-
The problem with February 26th, Mr. Golden has not been here through the drama of naming and un-naming the high school, okay? You're proposing to put off something as significant as this contract to the week where we are planning on possibly holding a public meeting in the convention center because of the number of people we expect to come out. It is a bad time. Any of us that have been through everything with Parrish and North River and Parrish High School, you are talking about postponing it to what we can expect to possibly be some level of drama with the board over possibly changing the name of the high school. That's why I wanted to make the comment in line with Vice Chair Messenger saying, hey, maybe that's a little far out. So I do have a problem with postponing this decision to the week where we are talking about so many people coming to a meeting that we're talking about holding it in the convention center. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
That was embarrassing to me, isn't it?
Okay, the Chair recognizes Board Member Golden.
Okay. I would be acceptable for any date. I'm, I'm the only one that has come up with a date, everybody else has come up with problems. So what I'd like to hear is what date would be acceptable other than today? And no further than the 26th of February, that would allow us all to have what we say we want. I'm, I, there's nothing magic about the 26th, except that it gives us the maximum amount of time to address all of the issues that we have with respect to the contract, and it addresses the maximum amount of time to allow public input. I said that, that we'd end it in January, and that we would discuss it the first workshop week in February. Now, I can't do any better than that. Now, whatever else is moving here, I don't think it's nearly as important as us being able to simply agree on what is in the best interest of everybody. We don't get the luxury of doing what each of us thinks is right.
Mr. Minor, for a motion-
Mr., Dr. Hope, now, I'm not as, 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 do not interrupt me, period. And Mr. Chair, I expect you to not let any of us interrupt each other. That's what I expect.
Just trying to give you what you asked for.
There will be a calling for the motion, you can do that then. If that's what you really mean.
Okay, the Board recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
Can I respond to Mr. Golden? How about January 22nd? Just throw that out there, if you don't like it, you just throw it right back.
Well, it shortens the time that we have for people, if we've got the Christmas holidays, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, I would even be-
Hanukkah's over.
I would even be acceptable to the end of January, or the first meeting in February.
Well, I, my thought was, then January 8th, we could have the conversation about the contract that we were talking about, and it seems like that will be a pretty easy conversation. And then the 22nd, we can vote and move forward. And that still gives the community over a month to reach out to us, to change your mind or not change your mind, and, and that gives over a month for that.
And we still have the March 1 contract date.
I don't think that that's been in dispute, but we can talk about it on the 8th.
If the contract date of March 1 holds, I don't have a problem with that. Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Superintendent?
No, sir, that, that will be okay.
Thank you. Then it's done. Mr. Chair, call a question.
We've got to put it in, in the right order, that's, we, we haven't changed the date yet, Mr. Golden.
Mr. Chair, you need a motion to postpone to 8th?
Okay.
That's-
All right, then I'm, I move that we postpone to January 22nd.
I'll second that.
Were we going to have the workshop on the 8th?
I can do that in a workshop request later.
Okay, I'm trying to understand this. Mr. Kennedy, you wish to make some comments, the Chair recognizes you.
Thanks, sir. I think, I think we know what we want to do. I think the proper way to do this, since we have Reverend Golden's original motion, is make a motion to amend that to a new date.
22nd of January.
That's right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend Reverend Golden's motion and change the date to January 22nd.
Okay. We got so many proposals floating around, I'm, I am confused. And it seems like it boils down to, to this board moving to provide a proposal of a contract for Superintendent Saunders, at least very similar to the proposal that's before the board denied, likely with inclusion of a paragraph concerning incentives. Similar, I guess, to what has been in her interim contract. But in any event, the discussion of particular terms of that contract would be subject of a workshop on January 8th, to kind of work it out and come to consensus of what we think would be fair and would be acceptable to the superintendent, in terms of the issue of length, which Vice Chair Messenger brought up, and incentive, which Vice Chair Messenger brought up. But otherwise, much in line with the provisions in the contract proposed today. And that the, following the workshop on January 8th, the next, there would be a board meeting on the 22nd of January, where this would be presented by the, to the board, for vote as, by the board and presentation to Superintendent Saunders, and that all motions otherwise made this evening here at the Days would be incorporated into what I just, you know, recited. Is that where we're going?
As a fair recital, Mr. Chair.
So, so Mr. Chairman, put it in the proper posture, if you'd like. I would move to amend the amendment by Mr. Kennedy to include the workshop on January 8th, to be followed by the item being taken up, my motion being taken up on January 22nd regarding the superintendent's contract.
Reflecting the discussions and decisions, or the consensus reached at the workshop on January 8th.
Did you want to second that, because you-
Okay, well, your second here will agree to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are, are we, are we all along on this? Is there, I just think it's important that we, I tried to enunciate it in a way that we're all on board. Mr. Kennedy?
Mr. Chair, the way that I see this, we have my motion to amend to January 22nd, which is under consideration right now. That amends Reverend Golden's motion, and then if that motion passes, we're done.
No, 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 I amended your motion, and it was seconded.
Okay.
To, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I withdraw my motion. Okay. Thank you.
Well, you got to, he's got to, in order for you to withdraw your motion, they've got to withdraw their motions for the amendment. I would-
Okay.
Well, it's-
If everybody-
For a question for the mover, what is the purpose of your withdrawal of the motion?
To allow your motion to be heard, okay?
Okay.
As amended by you just now.
Okay.
And seconded by the Chair.
Okay with that? Okay. Okay.
So everybody will remove, everybody will remove their motions, I will amend my own motion to postpone until January 22nd with, I move to postpone my motion to January 22nd and to hold a workshop on the superintendent's contract on January 8th.
Okay. And since, and since I seconded your original motion, I agree to that amendment in the second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our Ellen Barne? Okay. Not that we haven't discussed it any, but I think we're-
I call the question.
Okay. The question has been called. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's, all those opposed say nay. Okay. Board Member Hope's motion is approved unanimously, 5-0. Okay, I'm sure that, where are we? Okay, we're up to legal update. I, Mr. Dye, I'm sure you have a two-hour update on legal and you-
Mr. Chair, point of order?
Yes, sir.
We skipped over agenda requests and workshop requests.
I'm sorry, I, I apologize. We, we have requests on here. Is there, we'll go through it, and we'll start with Mr. Kennedy as to, do you have any workshop requests? And please don't put them on January 8th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, that's the only reason I stopped, is because I had a couple. And these can be, these are not necessarily time certain, one's a little more time certain than the other, but we, Mr. Minor, we had a gentleman, and Dr. Hope's introduced me to, Dr. Hope, can you help me out with the name?
Ameresco.
Ameresco, okay.
Which is through the Florida School Board Association.
Correct, thank you, thank you. And what they do for free is they'll, they'll come into the school district and offer an energy audit, and so broader point, though, I would like the board to have a conversation and hear from staff about, to Mr. Javlin's point, increasing energy efficiency, reducing energy consumption in the district, and kind of looking at where we can maybe save some money with increased energy efficiency. The second workshop request I have is, what I would like to be presented with, by, from the superintendent, is, the problem that I want to address is that we have, as we all know, we have a critical shortage of substitute teachers. And what's happening across all of our schools is that teachers on their planning period are being asked to fill in. And they are doing so out of duty and love for their school and their students, but in, as a matter of fairness, I, and to continue to motivate people to give up their planning periods to cover for our critical shortage of subs, that we should potentially look at some sort of financial compensation for our, for our teachers and staff who are covering classes outside of their regular contracted duty. So I'd like to just take a look at what potentially, if we were to do that, and at what levels, what that would look like financially, because it's a significant issue that we're dealing with. And then I will, the last one I'll save until my board on this, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Board Vice Chair Messenger? Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, Board, Vice Chair Messenger, do you have some requests you'd like to share?
No.
Okay. Board, Board Member Golden, do you have some requests?
The workshop on the.
Well, we already made the motion. It's already part of the motion.
The, um, the only matter that I'd like to begin to, to have considered is the issue of transportation that I raised earlier. I, our, our buses, I know we don't have the drivers, but beyond that, our bus system only accommodates children during the, uh, during the school day, at the end of the school day. And so many of our children miss out on the opportunity to participate in after-school activities because we don't have a transportation system to accommodate that. And so I, I'd really like to get as to how, I know we can't do it this year, it's probably difficult to do in the middle of the year, but as we plan for next year, I really would like to try to start planning, uh, for the opportunity for children who are bussed way away from home and who would like to play in the concert band but can't because of transportation issues. I don't know whether that's time-sensitive or not. I, I know that, I guess, when we start doing our budget work in January, maybe we can start getting some ideas as to how to, to get that done.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Hope's. Okay, okay, thank you. All right, um, the, um, let's have a legal update from Mr. Di.
I don't think the board is up to any more legal updates.
Okay, okay. Uh, the, the Chair appreciates that. We have, uh, instructional, uh, update from the superintendent.
Yes, uh, well, first, I would like to thank Mr. Wagner and, uh, the annual, fourteenth annual TSA District Events Held, uh, on, uh, December first. I don't know if, uh, if any of you were able to get out there, but it certainly was a tremendous event. Sixty schools participated and, uh, over eleven hundred kids. Um, it, it's grown and, and Doug really gets the credit for that. He's had a tremendous.
Team effort.
Team effort, with Doug leading the charge. Uh, I would like to answer a question, uh, that Reverend Golden asked earlier in regards to the AP courses.
Yes.
We have six high schools right now participating. Twenty-five different AP courses with a hundred and eighty-seven sections. I'm going to tell you how many seats are taken because it's not students, because some students take multiple AP courses. But it's three thousand nine hundred and fifty-four. And I believe that was stated an increase of three hundred this year. So we are moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, operations update, uh, Mr. Wagner.
Very good, Mr. Chair, thank you. I have a few. I've cut them down, but I still have a few that are timely. So, first of all, we had our human resources, um, job fair this past weekend at Daughtry Elementary School. We had sixteen schools that have vacancies show up, and we had eleven, uh, human resources staff on site as well, starting early on Saturday morning till Saturday afternoon. Uh, we've gotten our teacher vacancy list down to twenty-two teachers, which are open, which is a, a very low number, which is great. Our next job fair is going to be in January, and it's going, January seventeenth at Maskey, and it's going to be for support, uh, support staff, operations, and also aides. So, that's the first thing I want to thank, the HR department, it's Dr. Sarah Brown and Wendy Mangello, and also the eleven staff and all the teach, and all the principals and administrations who went. Uh, number two, Sandy Ford is working hard and doing a Maskey Support Center. This is, uh, Spirit Week is going on this week to show appreciation for her staff, our staff, and I want to say thank you for everybody at Maskey for participating, and also for Ms. Ford for bringing that forward. Tonight, uh, we approve new job descriptions, uh, and the new job descriptions have a clause where we're saying that, uh, the high school diploma and/or GED is preferred. And so we're wrapping that with a new program that we're starting here in Manatee County. So, people in the operations area, we're talking transportation, food service, custodial, uh, can apply for jobs if they don't have a high school diploma or a GED, and they're gonna, and part of it is that they're gonna enroll in our new work program. It's W O R C, which stands for Workforce Education Opportunities for a Ready Community, and it's going to be for MTC providing, uh, GED training for those adults who are coming to us who have great skills and they want to work, but something may have happened in their life where they didn't get to finish high school. So that's okay. So we're gonna allow them to apply for the job. They can, uh, go into the job, and then they're gonna enroll into this new work program. Uh, and so we're gonna help them get their GED. And so we think that's gonna help employ our community and also help us with some of our vacancies we have in the operations. So, we're excited about that. The scoreboard came up three times tonight at Palmetto High School, and that's on, that's slated to be put in before the Christmas break, before the holiday break. So it can be as early as next week being installed, uh, but we have to work around the schedules at the school. But our goal is to have that in before the students return back from the holiday break in January, so that's in progress, and I think people will be very excited to have a new scoreboard at Palmetto High School. So these are just a few examples of the operations team working hard to support our school system. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Uh, you omitted talking about the migrant, uh, labor recruiting and, uh, spreading the word that you don't need to have a, uh, GED or high school education, uh, to, uh, become a proud employer, employee of the school district in some of these areas where we desperately need employees. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
I appreciate you being at that meeting. Okay, uh, Superintendent remarks.
Yes, uh, we just recently announced our Excellence in Education Award finalist. Uh, I know that most of you have already received those in email. I want you to mark on your calendar that the event will be Wednesday, March sixth, at MTC. And we look forward to recognizing and celebrating our wonderful and outstanding educators. I really am just gonna make one comment about this evening. I, I know it's been a lengthy one, but I really would like to say a thank you and a gratitude, not only to the board, but the support of this district. I hope that we can work through this process and come to a unified place, that we can all work together as one team for the sake of our students. And I look forward to being a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Board comments. Let's start with Board Member Hope's.
I would just ask my colleagues to be both patient and courteous to our chairman, who, uh, this is his first full workshop and board meeting, including a shade meeting and two public hearings. And the technology, as you know, sometimes works, sometimes doesn't work. His peripheral vision may be as good or not as all of us. He may not be aware that you're waiting to speak. You may need to be a, a little more visible to get his attention. Uh, I want to commend the chairman. This was a, a, a lengthy day. It was serious work. And, and, and I appreciate the, the efforts, uh, that we all have made to continue to move the district forward. But, but please, it's, uh, it's a lot to get used to. It's not an easy job to keep these meetings going. Uh, and sometimes the technology doesn't work, and, and we may need to, I'm not saying shoot spitballs to get his attention, but we may need to pass a note down or something that we're, we're waiting to speak. I certainly didn't intend to, to interrupt you, Mr. Kennedy. I didn't know you were waiting to speak. Nobody was speaking. The lights weren't flashing, and so if you felt that I was doing that, I apologize. Didn't mean to offend you. I just ask that we, we continue to, to show the chairman courtesy and, and patience as he settles into, uh, his rhythm as our chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Board Member Golden, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Superintendent, uh, I want to thank you for the inclusive holiday, uh, decorations that we have in the lobby here. Asking everyone to have a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy Kwanzaa. And I would certainly hope that we could encourage that kind of inclusivity across the district. I don't think we have to have one celebration or the other. And so I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into being as inclusive as, as you can. Uh, I think your wish is already coming true. Because when we started the discussion about your contract, uh, we had at least three different positions. And I think I counted a total of about four motions that were made, uh, throughout the course of that discussion, but under the, not the leadership. Leadership is vastly overrated. All of us are leaders of somebody for something, but it's the stewardship. It's taking that which belongs to others and handling it with care. So I want to celebrate, Mr. Minor, stewardship that brought us to a five, zero vote. And that's not to be taken lightly. I just hope we have more of that as we go forward. That the spirit of cooperation and reconciliation, I heard Dr. Hope's just apologized to Mr. Kennedy with, I didn't hear him say, "I accept your apology," but that might be at the next meeting.
I speak next.
Oh, okay. But, but, in all seriousness, I, I think what we have gone through tonight is cathartic. I, I think it helps the people who are watching us, knowing that we are working for the district, not for our own agendas, and not to try to make something happen here that we want to have happen individually, but that collectively we have arrived at something that we believe is in the best interest of the district. And so I think, thank you all, and I wish everyone
Okay.
Happy holiday season.
Okay, uh, thank you, Board Member Golden. Um, Board Member Kennedy, you're up.
Thank you. Um, I just want to talk about two quick items of business. Uh, there was a lot of really good stuff brought up tonight, um, and I do think, um, of the issue of, uh, Palmetto High School and the history of what's, what's happened there, I think we as a board and as, as, as a district need to kind of take a hard look, and, and, and some ideas have already been thrown around tonight. We got some emails today with suggestions. You know, this, with all, everybody in this district working together and the community working together, I have no doubt that, um, you know, Pal, Palmetto High School can be better than it's ever been. Also, Keenan Wooton, uh, if you remember, Keenan, Keenan is our athletic director at, at Lee Middle School. He, he brought up a, an excellent point tonight, which I think we need to constantly, uh, remind ourselves of this as well, is that we are sorely lacking minority representation among our teachers and staff, and especially amongst our leadership. And I think he's right that we, we need to be mindful of that, and we need to, uh, do better outreach. Maybe not us as a board, but we need to, as a direction of the district, we need to, we need to focus on that. Uh, one quick wellness, uh, piece. Our, Row, our wellness coordinator, a couple weeks ago, sent out an email to all of our employees that, um, as part of our wellness program, we now have free access to an app called MindSpace. And, um, I, I've learned something tonight, and that is, I need to do more MindSpace and meditate and do mindfulness, um, because I, um, let my impatience and my fatigue get the better of me, and, Mr. Minor, I apologize to you. Uh, Dr. Hope's raises an excellent point. Um, this is a lot to get used to, and this is your first full meeting, and I lost sight of that in my, in my, in my frustration, and, and so I apologize. This will probably not be the first time I apologize. And, and, Dr. Hope's to you, that's, um, again, we, we have talked about these things, but I am first responsible for this. I also need to, even when I am frustrated, um, need to do it in a more respectful way, and I apologize for, for coming across that way. I hope you will, um, you will take me at my word on that. I, this is a, I sincerely mean that, and, uh, that will, that will not happen again. And that said, um, it's been an interesting night. I think we got a lot of good stuff done. Uh, we are making progress, as always, and, um, I just want to wish everybody a safe and joyous, whatever you celebrate. I hope you do it with your family and your friends, and, um, we'll see everybody back here second week of January. Happy New Year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Vice Chair Messenger.
Um, it's eleven-thirty, so I'm just gonna say happy holidays and happy new year, and I'm proud of us. We did a good job making it through everything tonight, and that's it.
Thank you for your lengthy comments, Vice Chair Messenger, and, uh, thank you all for your graciousness. Mr. Golden, Dr. Hope, Mr. Kennedy, and Mrs. Messenger, and, uh, to all of our community that we are so dedicated to service, serving, happy holidays, Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. Thank you very much for the privilege of serving. And to all, a good night. And this meeting is now adjourned.